The agenda review meeting is called to order. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Good afternoon. Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
Dr. Tim Merrick.
Present.
David Perry.
Here.
And Pete Wildebohr.
Also present.
All right, we're going to have the invocation. And after the invocation, I've asked Mr. Wildebohr to lead us in the pledge, but let's do the invocation.
My name is Jermaine Armour and I am the pastor of the St. Luke Church pier in the great city of Wilmington. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in some circles, you are known as teacher. So we ask that you would bless every teacher in our school system and every employee in every school. Christ came to us not as an adult, but as a child. So Lord, bless every child enrolled in our school system and those who will soon be school age children. And Lord, bless our school board members with wisdom, insight, and love as they lead us in the development of our most precious gifts, our children. This we ask in the name of Christ. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Is there a second? All right, discussion. Ms. Bradford?
I would like to rearrange, taking closed session and personnel report and putting them at the end. And then that would be after new business. And then under the personnel report, add the B and put the superintendent's contract there.
I second.
So those are three things.
Okay.
Two related.
So you're making an amendment to the original motion to move closed session consensus item personnel report and add
Mm-hmm.
the superintendent
Contract.
contract extension to after new business.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. So that was the amendment. I will entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. Mr. Perry?
Right. I'd recommend the agenda to add an item under whole business regarding the ad hoc performance bonus committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? I'm gonna have Crystal, will you call the roll on that one?
Dr. Merrick?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
It doesn't really matter, but yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Aye.
All right. So that goes under full business. So again, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So move.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. All right. Let's go through this agenda. Ms. Barnhart, can you keep the time for me?
Yes ma'am.
All right. So we have our call to order, our roll call, invocation, National Anthem, Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Chair?
Yes ma'am.
A point of order. I thought that the singing of God Bless America was absolutely wonderful and I thought the audience loved it and it just set a really good tone for the meeting. I had mistakenly thought we were gonna do that every month and it sure would be nice if we did it more than once a year. So just a comment on that.
Okay.
I was gonna make the same thing when we made a motion to add it. Do we have a question?
To add the singing of God Bless America. Ms. Justice?
Is this an addition to my agenda today from discussing this?
To the agenda for next week. As we did last month, board members want to add God Bless America to next week's agenda. Mr. -- Dr. Merrick, sorry.
Yeah, as much as I love the song and I love singing, I think that there are several issues with it. I did believe it was just for one meeting. I don't think it's appropriate to keep adding more and more, you know, things onto our agenda. It's, we're pretty busy already. We fight every time to get out of here at nine o'clock. I think there are also many people that I saw in the audience who looked around quizzically because of some of the concerns they have about what's happening in America today. And I don't say that we should, you know, not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or anything like that, but I think we have done a pretty good job of signaling our virtues already by saying the pledge and doing the National Anthem. I don't know that we need another one. My thoughts only.
Any other comments? Ms. Justice and then Mr. Perry.
I think it's really appropriate that we take care of business and focus on that.
We're already doing the National Anthem. We're already pledging allegiance. And it is virtue signaling. Let's be real. I loved the song when I was a child. Things have changed. I've learned a lot in life. I still love it in its proper place. I don't see we have to do this. That's three different things that we're doing at the beginning of the minute meeting that shows that we're so patriotic and love this country, which we do. I mean, we wouldn't be here if we weren't. But, I mean, this is taking more time. It is virtue signaling. I don't care what you say. And as I keep saying over and over again, we gotta focus on our business, focus on what's best for the schools. Don't keep adding things that are actually, in my opinion, politically motivating.
Mr. Perry?
I'll just kinda repeat what I did the last month when I asked for this to be added to our last, our last regular meeting. I just think that it sets a good tone for the audience and that we are, despite our differences, that we are all Americans first and foremost. And we're not, we're asking for God's guidance when we sing this, through the night with the light from above. I don't see the problem with it. I think it takes, what, a minute and a half? So, but.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Once again, I would like to apologize to everybody for missing the last two meetings. And I was not able to see that, so I would be in favor of doing it at least one more time because I'd like to see it and hear it myself, so.
Do you have any questions? Any? Anyone want to go ahead and ask anybody? My biggest concern is one that has been brought to me by board members, multiple board members, is that we are, we don't have enough time to do what we need to do. And I don't want, because July 4th, it really felt like it was the right time to do it. But my concern is that I don't want to keep on adding things to the agenda when many months it is already pretty full. So those are just my thoughts. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll on that?
Point of order. Madam Chair, is there a motion on the floor?
Uh, yes, there was a motion to add it to the
There was a second.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. There you go. Yes, Ms. Barnhart?
Now I have questions. Point of clarity, is this for a one-time add or continual? I do agree with my colleagues to the right of, I thought that this was a one-time addition for the Fourth of July month, so I would like some clarity in the motion. Is this a continual add of this song sing-along or is this a one-time add?
I would probably venture to guess at this point, since Mr. Wildebohr didn't get the opportunity to witness it for the last time, we'll just, for this moment, just for this month, then we can reevaluate whether we want to do it.
So solely for the month of August?
Solely for the month of August. All right. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? The motion is to add God Bless America to the agenda and it would be, where did we have it before? It would be after the invocation and before the National Anthem? Or was it before the invocation?
Before the invocation.
It was before the invocation. So adding God Bless America before the invocation, that is the motion. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? Nope. Sorry, Justice.
Clarification. Now I'm a little confused. For one time only?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then that's it as far as we're concerned, unless somebody else brings it up again.
Until it's brought up again.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
No.
And Dr. Merrick?
No.
That passes four to three. I'll write that in. All right. Pledge of Allegiance, we have Ms. Justice leading that. Are you good with that? For, then we can change it. Mr. Perry, will you lead it for this time?
I have a thought for a while.
That's fine, absolutely. Then we have the approval of the agenda, the approval of the minutes, recognitions. Do we have a lot? Two. So do you need 10 minutes?
I can do five to seven.
You can name that two and then five to seven? So let's go with seven, just to be
Madam Chair?
Yes ma'am.
Just another comment. The way that you're doing that, it's making the start of the meeting really friendly and kind and you can tell that the response coming out of the people there are enjoying it. And overall, in my time on the board, what we're doing now is working. And we've even gotten an email or two that said, hey, that's the most pleasant feeling as the meeting starts. So you're doing a good job.
Next, we have administrative introductions. How long do you need for that? Miss Go. 10 minutes? Okay. Superintendent's report, board chair report, call to audience. Then under information, we have MTAC. How long do you need for that, Ms. Brinson? So let's go with 10, just to be on the safe side. Ms. Bradford?
Can you give us a heads up on what, expand on that just a little bit more? And just, you're gonna give us an update on what the MTAC committee does or is doing or it's got a proposal or?
This was a response to a board request for more information about the MTAC committee's responsibilities and what they do.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Continuing on, we have consensus items. So the Title I application, 2025 to 2026. Does anybody have any questions about that? Dr. Merrick?
Just like a little bit more clarity, right? I mean, it's like, wow, that's really dense information.
Yeah.
So the document that provides the actual topic of the application we have to submit, it actually goes to NCDPI Program Monitoring Section for approval. And so I can give a summary, if you'd like, of what's included in the application, if that's helpful? Okay. So the total request in the application is 7.3 million and that's the total amount that we're eligible for based on the planning numbers that we've received from NCDPI. We will be, in this application, we are setting aside 96,000 for parent and family involvement, 54,000 for homeless, administration costs is at 636,000. That includes some PD, some software that we use to collect information from the schools and some administrative type services that we provide for the federal program. Our TSI, CSI schools, we have additional funds set aside for them, 150,000 to provide some additional services. We are picking up pre-K this year because of the reduction on the county side. We originally were not gonna do that, but we have put that into Title I now so that 975,000 reduction along with transportation and some things that we provided for pre-K in the past is included in this application. 10,000 for foster care transportation. And then we've set aside about 100,000, not budgeted yet, we think we may need for salaries because we don't have our raises and benefits. We don't have that state budget yet. And so those are the things that we set aside prior to giving the allocations to the schools. The total allocation to the schools in this application is 4.7 million.
Ms. Barnhart, did you have a question?
Yeah, I would just love if you could expand on a, you said 54,000 for homeless students as well as 10,000 for foster care transportation. Could you elaborate on how many students that are currently classified as homeless? I know that could be living in a hotel or not that we are currently able to serve. I know last time we had an update, I don't know how many years ago, it was roughly 800 for the whole district. Is, I don't know if that's
Do you have that, Lisa?
I do.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I can give you an exact number, but I believe we are at, we were last at 864, but let me double check. Thank you.
Number of students, yes.
864. One of the questions I had was whether
Nope, you're good. Dr. Merrick?
Whether or not the carryover from last year was included in this at all? And the 100,000 that is set aside potentially for salaries, those salaries would only go to Title I schools?
Correct. All this funding will just go to Title I schools, as I talked about in the beginning.
So it sounds like there's a little bit of room in there for us to absorb some of the losses we've had around pre-K and
Right.
and even ask for more. So thank you for that.
As you may recall, during the budget process, our original plan was to pick up pre-K or and EC, some expenses in local, and to be able to free up some Title I money to give more funding to the schools. However, because of the reductions that we've received, we weren't able to do that. So we had to go back and put pre-K back into the Title I budget.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And obviously, we have to match the raises and benefits that the state gets to all of its employees. So we have to have, since we don't know what that number is, we have to build that in.
Ms. Barnhart?
Not 864, 829.
Thank you. Ms. Bradford?
So, Ashley, the 7.3 million total eligibility, I didn't read the fine print on this sucker. Are we asking for all the 7.3? We've identified all those things and you just hit the highlights for us here?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And this is the 2526 application?
That's correct.
Is this things that should have been funded by July 1 that weren't yet, the impound? Or is this after that? Or was the impound from the year before? Because I know it's in arrears, right?
So this funding includes, as we had mentioned, carryover from the fiscal year 2025. And so we continued operations, assuming we would get the carryover, and we've already started using that carryover to continue operations. And so our plan is to get this application in and to get the new money down to us before we run out of carryover.
Always a good idea.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
And then each school is responsible for building their own Title I plan based on their own schools' individual needs.
Right.
Who knows, by the end of the year, we might actually all understand all of the titles.
Next one is 2025 budget amendments. Does anybody have any questions about that? Ms. Bradford?
I do. I am curious, let me see if I can pull it up. I took my little handy calculator and I calculated all those that were in parentheses that look like minuses to me and it was $2 million and some 2.148 million dollars of negatives. Am I reading that right? The budget amendments?
Are you looking at the agenda item that has the information listed?
Mm-hmm.
That's
Yeah.
The parentheses actually are increases.
It was just
Oh.
This is a dollar associated with the alignment. So in state, as you recall, we receive position allotment. And so what that means, if a teacher, the cost of a salary for a teacher is 60,000 or 9,000, they're gonna pay for that one position. So when we were estimating the budget related to that, the actual expenses were a little bit higher by that $5,000. So we ended up doing a budget amendment to make our budget match the actual expenses, knowing the state was gonna pay for that, whatever that expense was.
So that's a plus or a minus?
It's a plus.
Okay, all right.
But it's not
Cool.
It's not necessarily new money because it's related to a position allotment, if that makes sense. They were paying for that teacher no matter the cost. And then the same thing with the guaranteed allotments of the 490,000. Once our expenses hit for our, I'll make sure I use the right wording, non-contradictory employee benefits, and this is, these are things like longevity pay, retirement payouts, disability pay. Once all of those expenses hit for state-paid employees, the state will come in and cover all of those expenses. So once we knew what the actual expenses were for those things, we were able to budget that. So that was the adjustment we made there. Under local current expense, we did have some transfers. The overall budget did not change, but within different functions, we did have some adjustments. Our instructional support was a little bit higher than we had anticipated. And also, our final charter school payment based on their enrollment was higher than we anticipated. So we ended up using some lapped salaries that we had available and also some departments have some budget remaining. So we're able to move that down and cover those extra expenses just to close out the year. And then for federal, same thing. Our total federal budget did not change, but we did have to make some movement within the Children with Disabilities Program and our school improvement programs where we were over in certain lines, but other over in some and under in some. So we just adjusted within the programs. And then we also, for our capital outlay amendment, we had some savings. We finished up some projects. We finished the track resurfacing project and some, the security camera project. And the amounts you see in parentheses were the savings related to those two projects. And so that money will go back, we'll complete a final report and it will, we'll submit that to DPI. DPI will pull those funds back and then we'll be able to submit a lottery application to use those funds for another project in the future. So we'd like, as soon as those projects end, to go ahead and submit the paperwork so we have access to it whenever we need it. And then the last amendment was our other restricted revenue. We did receive some Medicaid reimbursement after our last board meeting and so I was very excited about that because as you may recall, we included, when we were building this year's budget, certain revenue would come in this year that we would carry over and use for next year's budget. And we had estimated an increase of about 500,000 in revenue. And I'm happy to say that came in, plus a little bit more, so we were super excited about that. So we have, the revenue that we had anticipated when we were building the budget has now come in. So that was the final amendment you see here.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Merrick?
Yeah.
If what I'm hearing is correct, a lot of, you know, kind of massaging the different places where we had a little extra, we had a little need, no new cuts to any programming, no new cuts to any personnel, no new cuts that we didn't know about in our original budget that we presented.
That's correct.
We love it. Thank you.
None that we haven't already shared with you.
That's, that's correct.
None that we haven't already shared with you.
Yeah. And just, just to be clear, everything I discovered was technically last school year's budget. This was our final adjustment to last year's budget to clean everything up, get everything finished, to close out the year and start getting ready.
Ms. Bradford?
So basically, it's not found money, but it's not a reduction either.
No.
So it's something to celebrate.
Yes. This, everything here, we were on target. We just had a few adjustments we needed to make for year end, but we were on target with what we thought was gonna happen. And then we also, as I said, picked up that, a little bit more of the Medicaid money that we were hoping for when we were building this school year's budget.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. So I was just notified that there is another consent item that needs to be added. So I'm gonna pause before we go to the next one and it was, Ms. Barnum?
So this is unexpected. We, it wouldn't normally need to come to the board for approval because it's a contract for an amount less than $300,000. But we issued a request for proposals for speech services, contracted speech services to cover where we have vacancies or to cover additional speech services for students with IEPs. And I don't want to wait until the September board meeting. So we issued a request for proposals, but only got one bidder, one company saying that they could take on the work. Therefore, and because these are covered by federal dollars, this would be a sole source provider. And sole source providers need to be approved by the board. So it's not the dollar amount and we didn't expect it until the RFP closed and now we just have one, one company. So I would want to add that, I don't have the name of the company, but I will, I will provide that to you shortly. I would want to add that to the consent agenda for next week.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
So that would go under like G?
Don't we have to have a two-thirds vote to add that? I hope we will.
At this point, yes. Yeah.
I would like to move that we had that to
I'll second.
All right.
And it would read something like approval of an RFP for a sole source provider and put it under G.
Or would it be speech services?
Speech services, sole service.
It would be, right. Sole source provider of speech services.
Yeah, there we go. Ms. Justice?
Just for my information sake and other people, could you describe what sole source provider is as opposed to a wide open provider?
Yes. So basically, because we only have one bidder bringing their proposal to us, we need to choose them as opposed to choosing from a range of providers that responded to our RFP. So that makes them sole source and this is the only one we could possibly use at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Sutton?
When we say sole source, that means we only have one vendor that can, so it is a little bit different than how you probably heard that language used in the past. But this really is because we put out a RFP and we only had one responsive vendor and we need to be able to provide these services when schools start. So I think it's still the same thing. We wanna make sure the board's okay with us only having one responsive provider and us making a decision based on that instead of bidding that out again.
Okay. Mr. Perry?
Quickly, obviously, there was only one response from one vendor. But given what's usual or typical, you didn't see anything extraordinarily out of the ordinary about the bid or the amount?
No. And we already use some contract providers, but it's the only additional contract provider that came forth at this time.
Right.
Yeah, nothing out of the ordinary.
All right. So there's a motion to add sole source provider of speech services to consensus. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. So going back up to C, contracts extending into fiscal year 2027. Ms. Bradford, you have questions?
The first one, Howard Shelton Committee for Children, it's not a whole lot of money, but what's Committee for Children? What's that vendor?
Committee, yeah. Committee for Children hosts our Darkness to Light training that is a part of our sexual abuse prevention.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay. Disposal of surplus property. Mr. Perry?
How much is, I've got a couple of questions, so, how much do we, are we estimating how much the, this auction would raise, and is that, is that money in, in our budget, or is, would this be over and above what we already?
So we do budget for the year, how much we anticipate receiving for surplus sale, not necessarily for each individual auction, and it's really based on the past four years, how much during that timeframe we've received, and then we do like an average of that when we're building the budget. So since this is the first one, of course, we won't have any extra yet, but it could be at the end of the year, we, our surplus sale exceeds what the budget is, and then we would come back and budget that of additional funds. I don't know if you recall or not, but we did, I believe in May, we did go over that original revenue amount that we had in the budget, and we did come back to the board and budget that additional revenue.
So right now, it's not, upcoming sales are not budgeted in, it would be later?
Right, so we do have revenue budgeted in the current budget for surplus sales.
From buyer sales or from this upcoming sale, or an estimate?
We ju- I've budgeted for the whole year, so all the surplus sales we'll do for the whole year, I've created a budget of what I think, I've estimated what that revenue would be.
Well, the reason I ask is, does, I see the, I went through some of the list of some of the stuff, and in my mind, it would be great if we could give our, our teachers and perhaps some of our disadvantaged students some opportunities to get these at a, first dibs at a discounted price, the, some of these things, as a bonus to our, our employees. And, you know, just stuff, personal computers and iPads and all sorts of things in there which people might want. So, but, you know, I, I want, I don't want to kill the budget at the same time, but I'd like to be, has any thought been given to offering this stuff to our employees and to our disadvantaged parents?
We could research that. My understanding is by state law, we're required to surplus to be able to get the most funding we can unless we have an internal use for that. But as far as giving first dibs to our employees, I'm not sure if we can do that. I think we would have to research to see if that's allowable.
Mr. Wildebor?
I hate to be, bring this to your attention, but there's no such thing as a scroll saw.
There's a type of, I'm sorry?
Scroll saw?
After Smartboard, there's scroll saw?
No, just because we haven't heard of it.
You know, maybe.
There you go. If you can work on that scroll for us, please.
There's actually only one of them.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
I know that we as board members can't bid on surplus, but I, I'm pretty sure employees, which would include teachers, can't bet on surplus either. Can somebody correct me on that? Dr. Morgan?
So employees can't, so if you are part of the process as far as determining what goes to surplus and approving the surplus items, you can't also go and then bid on those surplus items. But if you're not involved in the process at all, then you could go and bid.
And we are involved.
And attorneys can help me out if I've said anything wrong related to that.
Scroll saw for me.
Trust me, I would have done it if you could.
Just also, just a little editorial, refrigerator doesn't have a D in it.
What if I recuse myself?
Thanks for all your help. I sincerely need it all. Thank you.
Where there goes my plans to get my hand on a scroll saw.
Sorry, sir. All right, any other questions on the surplus?
We left one here.
Oh, my Lanta. All right. Next, we have the memorandum of understanding between New Hanover County Board of Education, Hanover County Health and Human Services, and Coastal Horizon Center, Inc., LFA revised. Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you. Ms. Barnum, I know this is the, what we have to submit to DPI. So my questions, and we've had conversations about it, I'd just like for it to be an open to the public so they can hear, is talking about our temporary or transitional staffs, our substitute teachers and things, so in response to are all of our staff receiving these trainings so they can maybe be responsive as well as our nonprofits that come into our school and support our students to support this plan for suicide prevention and mental health.
So I, I think the question might be related to a different item.
Okay.
Is your question related to the school mental health plan that we will submit?
Yes, mine comes in the process to the training that our, that our staff go in behind it, and that includes our temporary or substitute staff, our people coming in volunteering, nonprofits, things like that.
So related?
Yeah, how are we, how are we helping to train them and bring them up to par so everyone's on the same page with the same information? So we're all in a cohesive boat together.
Yes, so all of our MOUs, such as this one, require that our professional development crosses employment. So if you are working in our schools in a, in a collaborative position under an MOU or a contract, then you are provided the same professional development along with our staff because you have the same requirements for duty. Yes. And then I want to clarify about this one. It's a revision, this was already approved?
Yep.
By the board? The revision is in 7D under indemnification, and this comes at the county's request, county legal request, to just add a statement that has been there before, under indemnification to begin that sentence with, "To the extent permitted by law, Public Health and Coastal Horizon shall be responsible for action."
I see it. Okay, no, I'm good. I was just trying to get a general understanding of what it was, but I think in what Julie just said, I've gotten it. I read it a couple of times, and I still wasn't sure what it is, but I think I do.
Uh, Ms. WPD contract for SRO services, any questions on that, Mr. Perry?
Just quickly, does, does this contract, as far as terms or policies, differ in any significant way with the one we have with New Hanover County Sheriff's? Maybe Mr. Blanchard could respond.
No, only in that it is serving just four schools. It's WPD, so we have one, we have one SRO for WPD for the four schools, Hutter, Deacon, and Earl. And just to point out, the only reason that you're getting this now is because you signed the MOU at the last meeting, but we didn't have this contract with it, and so we thought it was important to go ahead and send it forward as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Merrick?
Just for us folks that are still getting our feet underneath us, can you explain why we have some with the city and some with the sheriff?
Yes, I think years ago, honestly, it was well before my time, I think it was set up as a relationship thing to have the Wilmington PD placed in our downtown schools so that they were working in conjunction with the sheriff's department, and they were also working, I think, to establish the relationship of folks who live downtown and attend schools downtown.
And then we have the sole source provider of speech services contract that we have already discussed. Does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Barnum about that?
I'm going to share that the company is Soliant Health, which we generally contract with on an annual basis.
Thank you. All right. Next is policy, and I'm going to ask Mr. Wildebor, how long does he need for policy and policy consensus?
This one's going to be a little bit short. We have something unusual, so I'll go to that in a second. Next one, I'm going to need half the meeting, so just letting you know, we put everything off.
So for next time, well, just everything else, just policy?
Basically, you know, policy will take half the meeting.
Have a second policy meeting?
Yeah.
Follow-up policy?
But this one, we, I do want to highlight, and I'll go back to the top, but 2610, actually, Mr. Kromke kind of brought that forth, well, Ms. Justice brought it forth and Mr. Kromke, and I think we would like to have probably a good, at least 15-minute discussion on exactly what, you know, there's, there's questions on how we should word that, you know, just to, for overview for everybody that may not know, basically, used to, everything funneled through the chair. The chair would say, yes, you can contact the attorneys, or no, you can't. During my time as chair, we kind of loosened that up a little bit, and, but now there's a question, you know, well, if I go to the attorney and discuss something, say, for instance, then, you know, the question is that, then he would share out to everyone what was discussed, and Kromke, if he did that, their bill would probably double because it just would take a lot of time. So he asked that we would have a time to discuss exactly how we want to do this, whether we want to, you know, because in, in all defense of Mr. Kromke and Ms. Blanchard, they don't want to, you know, send in, you know, you know...
A massive invoice.
A whole bunch of, you know, money from, you know, from us, and so, so if we could, you know, allot 15 minutes for that, I don't think the other three would take probably five, so maybe 25 minutes total, just to be sure.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
I mean, it sounds like if that's what we need. Ms. Bradford?
The attorneys, you're keeping up with House Bill 804, which was vetoed, overridden this morning. House Bill 804, because it's got the word biological in there attached to the word sex, and the ramifications of that on the policies that we've had on our, on our plate now for months.
A few months.
I don't know why, I just, I was just there.
You said that, but I did not try.
No, it happened today. I mean, and, and...
Hang on.
I don't know that I can tell you what it, what it is, but I know, I know part of it is the word biological, so.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so that's for the attorneys to kind of look up. Dr. Merrick?
Yeah, I'm having trouble looking at this document and knowing what it is, you know, I see some scratching out, and I see some, you know, some indents here and there. I, I don't really know how to read it very well.
I think...
And I would just ask that, can we clarify this a little bit more?
And I think...
It came actually, Ms. Justice, you may, because she was the one that actually brought in the pink part here, that, that basically every board member must be informed of the question and response within 24 hours or prior to any board or committee meeting, whichever comes first. So basically, that they would have to, again, you call, you know, you call them, if you go through, to present the board chair, or you talk to them directly, that they have 24 hours to report out to the rest of us what you ask and what their response was.
But is that being removed, or is that being added?
That's what you would like to add.
I see. And, and all these other scratch marks in here, I, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't there at the meeting, and I, it's a little difficult.
Are these things that we can kind of add to the conversation next week that we can get some clarification on? Just because we do have some things we need to cover, and we do have to get through this. Ms. Justice, and then Ms. Bradford, real quick.
This is really quick, but I had the exact same concern when I first looked at it, and it's still the same. I said, can we clean this up so we can understand it?
I don't know who put that, because usually when we do policies, it's a lot clearer as to what the changes are, but this is messy and confusing, so I guess it's still the same, hasn't changed. Somebody could clean it up by next week and make it everybody's life.
Yeah, and tell us, you know, language in red is new, language here, whatever.
We can do that for sure.
All right.
Absolutely.
And Madam Chair, I want to just point out something to think about when you're thinking about 2610. I went to the superintendent's office and looked at the last year's worth of legal bills, and in November, attorneys billed for the December, month of December, $8,440. By the December billing for the month of January, it was $10,000. For the February billing in March, it was $16,000. And the May billing in June of this year was $20,000. So regardless of the number of, of bond forfeitures and the number of PRRs, we have doubled the amount that we're spending on the board attorney, and you should just keep that in mind as we deal with this policy.
All right.
I'm sorry, I won't be fair. Just to be clear, and this happened, oh, I'm sorry.
You're catching up.
Okay, and this, this is due to the fact that you're catching up on the public, yeah, so this won't be happening, this was way back long.
What it's worth, it was 30% less this month.
Yeah. All right. Ms. Barnhart?
Well, from the conversation I'm hearing, it sounds like the concern of potentially adding and changing this policy, and hopefully, it's going to be a little bit better addressed where the additions are, but potentially, the concern is coming from the amount of finances that will come with that. Is that what the concern I'm hearing bring up from a fellow board member?
I'm just, yeah.
Yes, okay.
All right. We really need to keep going, but Mr. Perry?
Very quickly, I mean, I'm going to propose, and I'll even write an amendment to this, to propose that we leave it upon the board member itself to report the query in the response within 24 hours and not burden our attorneys.
I think this is a discussion for next week, so let's, let's keep that for next week and continue on. The next thing on here is the budget update, sir. How long do you need for that?
Let's say five for me, five for y'all for questions.
So 10 minutes?
I can do that.
Okay, don't, don't hang up yet. Ironically, wireless communication.
So this is really just an overview and an update for you folks. I've, I've had a team researching the legislation regarding cell phones and our current policy, and we're making some adjustments that we want to bring to the policy committee. I can give you guys an update in five minutes.
During the meeting?
Yeah.
During the meeting, yes. This is, this is just the, how much time he needs. Next, Sally's Law Resolution. Dr. Merrick, how much time do you need for that?
I, I think that we can do that in five minutes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Wildebor?
I did try to open that to see the resolution, and it won't open.
Oh, dear. I will, I will send you everything today, Pete.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
And my technological skills are...
Can't we just get it up on the menu because the board wants to read it, too?
Sure. So I will send it to both you and to Ms. Bowie?
And I think that, hearing from them, they said it's a Word document that has to be downloaded.
Correct.
So that might be some of the, if you don't have Word on your computer, that might be a challenge, but we can kind of...
It needs to be in Word?
It is in Word, so...
Oh, I know, PDF? Got it.
Would that be, PDF would be better. It would be better.
And Madam Chair, if we could...
Ms. Barnhart?
Add 10 minutes so we can have discussion with it?
Okay.
I don't know if that's amenable, but...
10 minutes for, for Sally's Law? That's fine.
Just the next two items so that they, it's not just a do...
And so 10 for Leandro as well?
I don't know how much you want, but I just, I would like to have some time for discussion, that's all I'm asking.
I think that's appropriate. It's important for the public to hear it. I just wanted to make a quick mention that we have both Charlene Zorn for Sally's Law and Rebecca Trammell for the Leandro Plan here, because today. I just want to acknowledge them for coming and for doing all the background work that allows us to bring this to the public. Thank you.
All right. And then next on there is closed session, which we will need, sir? Yes, no?
I will be, so, just, we're closing in on the final person.
And do we know how much time that might take? 30? Five, five. Look at you. We're going to put 10 just to be safe because...
Then you're going to look like a mirror.
I know better. All right, and then we have the personnel report, correspondence, announcements, and adjournment. I'll give Ms. Barnhart a minute to calculate.
Three hours and 17 minutes if we're going with Ms. Baggie's suggestion of a seven-minute recognition, but three hours and 20 minutes if we wanted to.
Did you include restroom break as well?
No, so add five minutes to that, so 325.
325, okay.
We can talk really as well.
Um, no.
You might get out of here on time.
Will you people stop jinxing it? All right, next. We have on our, this agenda, the discussion of board business. This was brought to us a couple months ago by Mr. Perry, who had some concerns about how much time we, we have as far as meetings go, and if we have, that, there's a feeling that there's not enough time for discussion of things, and so he had requested that we talk about how we can make more time for discussion. So I'm going to kind of hand it over to you, Mr. Perry, real quick, and you can kind of start the discussion.
I'll try to be quick. So, yes, so, um, this is what it's about. Can we make more time for, for discussion? Oftentimes, we are, we are going through pretty heady topics and sometimes controversial topics. We don't always agree, and, but we are so stretched for time sometimes is that we end up eliminating the debate. I know I've got frustrated, at least on a couple of occasions, where I felt I had one more point to make, but we didn't have enough time to do it. And I know we can always have private conversations over coffee and stuff, but I do believe that the, that we owe it to the public to have most of our conversations in public so they can hear what our rationale is. We want to be fully transparent to the community on not only what we do, but how we do it. How, how do we get there? And so I think transparency is something, it feeds into this whole transparency for us to have robust debates here, you know, whether it's on the dais or whatever, because the more transparency, the more we kind of get it out there, the more public goodwill I think we're going to inspire. People know that we're, you know, hey, this is why they think this. It's not only how they vote, but why. And I think that's going to instill better public confidence in our thing. So, you know, just some suggestions, you know, I, I've made the suggestion before. I know it's about having a quarterly awards and recognition. I know some people don't like that, but also, could we have a second meeting in the mid-month to take care of some other stuff? Or I'll just open to any suggestions. Or, I'll just open to any suggestions. How can we get more time so that we don't have to cut off discussion just because we don't want to stay after 9:00 PM?
Dr. Merrick?
Well, it kind of dovetails a little bit with what we talked about earlier. If we're going to add four minutes for a song, it kind of, you know, that's a funny argument, right? If we're going to add time for a song and yet we want more time to discuss. I do though, agree with my colleague that I think we could have some of the fanfare. That's wonderful. I love watching our students parade. I love listening to them do their presentations. I don't know that it needs to be monthly. And, you know, there's a possibility that we could have, you know, the ROTC come in on a quarterly basis or something like that. There are, there are other options that we could do to reduce the amount of time. I don't want to take away the pageantry because that's how we celebrate our, our kids. Perhaps we have an extra meeting, which is simply about celebrating our students.
Ms. Barnhart?
I appreciate my colleague trying to bring up ways that we can speed up the process. That'd be a nice way to say it. But I think that there's been a lot of streamlining of communication, especially under this administration, of making sure that we have access to information, that we are sharing that information, once we receive it with individuals. This meeting in particular, Agenda Review, came after my, honestly, my initial frustrations of being one of three people called into the Agenda Review and I said, so I have access to information, all my colleagues don't before. It was a crazy thought and a process because how can you allow yourself to make informed decisions if you're not even part of the discussionary point? So having this meeting was very important and I'm something, it's proud, I'm proud of our board to do this because we are able to openly have that dialogue and some, yes, some points are repeated in the board meeting next week, but it allows us the opportunity, just like my colleague said, to come together, to have those honest dialogue and conversation. But in addition, it's highlighting the intentionality of the transparency that we have built to create, that this leadership is continuing to facilitate and engage with. So I appreciate this. I think that it's part of the process of working together. We all come from different backgrounds and many of us did not have a relationship prior to sitting into this role. And so there are going to be communication hurdles that come along the way. I do not in any way, shape, or form want to eliminate our students and our staff coming here and highlighting what the good work we are seeing being done in our district. And so I try very hard to get to one to three schools a week. That, and that literally is, I cannot get to every single school, even just doing one a week in a year. And so I, I think it's an opportunity for us to come together and to stay focused on the decision-making that we have to do for our staff and students. And so I don't want to see that be cut in any way, shape, or form. I just want to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Willoughby, then Ms. Bradford, then Ms. Justice?
Well, all due respect to the ideas forth, I think that they, you know, I don't disagree at all that we think we're here for a very simple reason and that is to do the business of the school system. Ms. Justice and I remember the days of multiple meetings that went on and everybody got a chance to talk and talk and talk and talk more. So maybe we need to think about that when we talk and, and really think about, let's say the point, say what you need to say and don't need to say it for 15 minutes. I mean, that would also give us some more time. I, I don't agree that we need, I mean, it's pathetic. It, it should be everything we do about the kids. So for us to say, well, let's go ahead and not do the kids and let's not have the kids do this or do that, I mean, I, I disagree with that 100%. I mean, the students and the faculty that are here, they come out here and, you know, you know, the teacher voice, the student voice. I mean, I, I don't want to cut that out. I mean, to have, you know, those, those young men and young women that get up here and, you know, sing their hearts out and sing the National Anthem or whatever, I mean, to say, well, let's not do that. I mean, what, you know, I mean, that's, that's the joy. I mean, it's, I think that all of us would agree, going into school, seeing the school, the students doing what they do and, and the teachers do what they do, that's, that's really the joy of this job. And, you know, and to say, well, let's go ahead and cut some of that out so we can talk more. I, I can't agree with that. So, I mean, I, I think we need to maybe find other ways, maybe limit what we say. You know, if you're a little less of us and a little more of them, that's my thought.
Ms. Bradford and then Ms. Justice.
I would agree with everything that Mr. Willoughby said. You know, the Agenda Review was brought in and we set the times for what these things are going to take. But we're supposed to talk to each other in the interim and say, hey, what is this about and how do you feel about this? So we get a feel for what the rest of the board thinks. But sometimes we just throw things on the agenda that really probably don't belong on the agenda if we just talk about it beforehand. And, you know, and if we'd actually read the board package before we got here, that would cut down on the amount of conversation you have in the meetings. And we're allowed to reach out to the staff person and say, you know, hey, what is that, you know, the part about J.C. Rowe, you know, what, what's that about? Or reach out to the chair, reach out to the vice chair, even reach out to the super, who's uber available and say, what's that about? So we don't have to take so much time in the meeting to do it. It just, it puts the homework part on us. But if I mistake the Madam Chair, are we not, I mean, don't we follow some kind of Robert's rule of order to where, you know, we, we make a motion, we make a session, we have discussion, and everybody gets roughly two shots at, at discussion and then we vote? That's set out in, in, in the regulations. So, so, so asking for four or five shots at speaking at something isn't going to, isn't going to play because it's already set out. You need to be concise in what you say in those, in that one or two opportunities you get to speak and not repeat something somebody else has said. But I am totally against changing anything about the top part of our meeting. That's the part that carries me through the rest of the night. I love seeing the kids come up. I love seeing the teachers do their part. I love all of it. And when you go to the county commissioners, you know, and I told Dr. Burns, I said, so I'm not talking behind his back, the county manager does the recognitions. Why? Because they value their staff. Guess how high the staff retention is at the county level? Probably higher than ours. You know, the fact that we recognize staff members for the things that they do good, that's helping us with retention. It's a huge reason why we do all of that and why it might seem boring to some people. It's not. It's just a huge part of what we do. And I would, I would strongly fight against changing any of that.
Ms. Justice?
I'm pretty much agreeing with everything everybody said. I would like to thank this particular group and this superintendent for what has changed over the last four years. When they, Pete and I went through it, we actually had people from Raleigh tell us we should be doing this. And the past leadership on the board refused to do it. That's why we had meetings until 12 and 1:00 in the morning. And, I mean, I even put together committee and we even, the committee said we had to do it this way and they still refused. So thank you very much. I like what's going on. You know me, you can't leave them kids out, certainly can't leave them parents out, certainly can't leave our staff out. That's the best part of the evening. That's why.
Is that electric guitar?
It's a buy-in. Sorry about that. But that's the way it is. Because there, this is, this is all together. We're together in this and that shows that. This is the reason we have everything else that goes on after the beginning of the meeting. So I just mainly wanted to say, I, I'm very impressed that this particular board group did what should have been done years ago and could have been done. And, and it was all about transparency. The previous board was trying to control, I don't know what, because it never really seemed cohesive to understand what was happening. It was like more confusion, the less, you know, less people could understand what was happening. This is very, the steps are very clear. We communicate well. And, and some, both of you, everybody spoke and said, we, maybe we just need to cut off some of this stuff and stop saying things over and over and over and over and over and over again, you know? Okay, anyway, thank you.
I'm going to speak ahead of it yet. And as Chair, my colleague is correct. I've been trying to make sure that we follow the Roberts Rules procedure so that we're not extending meetings beyond what we should be. There comes a point, I think, for everybody in the room where our brains are mush and things don't, decision, good decisions don't get made when our brains are mush. We know this. So I think that I've tried to maintain that procedure. I don't always do it perfectly and so I appreciate the grace that everybody gives me for that, but that's something that, that I have tried to do and in an effort to make sure our staff is home at a reasonable hour as well, that we're home at a reasonable hour, but we're also getting things done. For me, when I sit and I am watching, or when I'm standing and I, we get to be up there and we get to thank all of these, these teachers, it makes it much more personal and is such a positive thing for me as I'm sitting because this job is hard. We know this job is hard. And so watching the good things and seeing the good things, we have to have the good because there is going to be the hard things that we have to do as well. For every positive thing, no, for every negative comment, you need five positive. And I see that as a, that's what these, these awards, these recognitions, those are the positives that we need as we move forward because it's going to be hard decisions that we have to make, especially in this budget season. And so for me, I can't justify getting rid of any of these celebrations. And then one last thing, I know that at one point that we did have a celebration, a few years, a few, couple of years back. We did have one big celebration of recognition, but it wasn't necessarily well-received by our staff. And so I don't want to mimic that. If it didn't work, the, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. And so I, I don't think that's the best approach, in my opinion, to go. I think that what we're doing now is positive. I think it boosts the morale. I think it keeps our staff here. I think it keeps our families engaged. I think it keeps our kids engaged and I think it's just such a positive thing. So I can't, I can't justify getting rid of anything. And I can't remember who had their hand up first. It was Dr. Merrick or Ms. Barnhart?
Well, I was going to call point of order because we are at time too.
So you were going to call a point?
Well, I, I wanted.
That we're at time?
I had a point to say, but it's, it's fine. But we are at time.
We are at time.
Point of information for Ms. Justice and our other new board members, if you don't know, that was a bipartisan effort between, on an ad hoc committee between me and Mr. McManus. We worked on it for months. We interviewed every county board and we asked them, how did they do it? And that's how we came to that. It took us probably three months to enact that and it was a little bumpy in the beginning. But it was a hard effort on the people sitting on this side of the room and, and we did it and it's definitely better. We noticed that one board member would fall asleep around 9:00 o'clock, so there was really no point in having. And then some of us would go like completely crazy by 9:00, so we figured 9:00 was a good arbitrary date, their time to just cut it off. And that's how we got to where we are.
All right. So, super fast, Dr. Merrick, and then we're going to move on to the next thing.
I did not know that we had, oh, I did not know that we had tried that. And I, I take your point because I don't want to shut anybody down. We, we love our kids. We want to, we want to showcase them. So I'm, I'm appreciative for that knowledge. I'm also appreciative for what I believe to be an increased collegiality that we're starting to see over the last little while, and I appreciate that. And so I don't want my comments now to go against that. But I do need to say, having talked to some of the students in student voice and some of the different educators, sometimes there's a feeling that what we call student voice, what we call teacher's voice doesn't necessarily give them as much movement to express themselves, especially their concerns. And I would like to revisit that at some point. I just want to put it out there.
Okay. All right. Dr. Barnes, you do want to talk?
Sorry.
You're fine.
But specifically for that, to encourage staff members as well, there is a process for discussing concerns that you have as well. It, it is hard for a, a staff member to come to speak directly to the board when we have policy directing them to speak to their supervisor first. So it is a, you know, but that's why we have listening tours. That's why I put myself out there as well. And again, if you don't have my cell phone number by now, you're just not trying. So, all right, thank you.
Well.
I think tomorrow night is representative of that, so I just want to, I like that in case anybody's watching or listening. Tomorrow, tomorrow night, you know, that there is an opportunity for staff members.
Actually, if you could explain, I've had a lot of people call me and say, hey, what's the format for this? Should we come? Should we not come? You know, what's going to happen? So there is some apprehension in the community. Can you tell us what's going to happen tomorrow night, sir?
Well, and just after you get done with that, you can just roll right into the next thing.
All right. Have you ever seen American Gladiator?
No.
Yes.
Okay, it's going to be like that. It's just an opportunity, really, it's just a round robin. I'm going to model the same listening tour process that I did with schools when I went with them. Most of what I want to talk about tomorrow night, five to six with fam, parents, dang it, I did it backwards. Five to six with staff, six to seven with families. One is to get feedback from the last year, anything they felt. Showcase the goals that I've been working on with you guys for the upcoming school year, give them a brief understanding of where the budget sits. And then just get feedback in regards to what they want to see is the biggest thing for this upcoming school year for the district.
So is that at tables or an audience and they can raise their hands or?
I'm going to, I'm going to put a big circle of chairs right here and anybody is welcome to come in and weigh in.
So nobody's a spectator, everybody's a participant?
Yep. Thank you. All right. So next, if we can discuss information, number B. Geez, you get me on that every time. Obviously, we have a new principal at J.C. Rowe. Her name is Michelle Cornegy and she has been sitting and doing exactly what we encourage new principals to do, which is listen to their staff. J.C. Rowe is currently actually titled the J.C. Rowe Center. She would like to propose that we change the name of it to the J.C. Rowe Academy because the main focus of that school is academics. So if, I've, I've clipped the policy 9300 in there about renaming. The board would have to give a 60-day waiting period and then vote on this in October to officially change the name. It's really not changing as much as it is updating for where this school is going and she feels very passionate about the direction that school wants to go in. So I just brought that to the board first.
Dr. Merrick?
I'm, I'm fine with that. And I apologize, I may have read the policy a little quickly, but it seemed like it said, if you're going to change it, it had to be about a geographic, like, I didn't understand that part. And I'm, I want to make sure that we're not breaking our own policies.
I think that is if we're naming a new building, I think.
Well, I think it said new or existing. But, look, I'm not against that. I just wanted to know whether or not we needed to change the policy or vote to ignore the policy, you know, as a whole.
Yeah, unless approved by the board after waiving the requirements of the policy, I would think. And I think this is more, it's a, I don't want to call it a gray area, but it is sort of like, we're not changing the name. We're just changing the description of the name. But obviously, that's why I wanted the board to be aware of that.
Do we need to do anything for you? Do we need to make a motion? Do we need to?
I don't know. I'm going to let Ms. Barnhart go and then Ms. Bradford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to ask the question, should we hold a hearing in the process? I mean, I understand that this is a small, a small thing, but kind of not at the same time. And so if we're, if we're having to do a waiting period, should we have an opportunity specifically to the public to engage in this regard? I know that I was not able to be present and I'm grateful for how the pre-K thing happened with last month, but I know that there was a lot of community conversation and engagement. And so I don't know if this is an opportunity for our board to have a specially called hearing and engage our community in that way.
Ms. Bradford?
I would be in favor of doing this for the obvious reasons. And whatever we need to do to get it started, if there's going to be a 60-day wait, I think Dr. Merrick is on the right track. We need to add it to next week's agenda with a board vote now so that, that we can then vote on it next Tuesday to get the ball rolling. And we would, if, if we have to, we would put in that motion to waive the requirements in policy so it can be just named Academy and not have to do something weird. But, so I would, I would make a motion that we add it to next week's agenda as, as an agenda item, because right now we can't vote. It's under.
It's not supposed to be voted on. It's just for information.
It's just on information today, so we couldn't if we wanted to.
Well, we want to add it to.
Mr. Perry, and then I have a question.
So, the rationale, I think Ms. Mason gave me on the phone last night, was that the current center is, in some ways, kind of gets the wrong connotation that it's a detention center or something like that, which has a negative effect. My only, my only question, I don't have a problem with the word academy, but it, my understanding is, is that, you know, if they were going to go there until they graduate, then, and some probably do, then I, I would have no problem with it. We have all kinds of different ones called academies, but my understanding is some people may go for a while and then transfer somewhere else afterwards. Is that not the case?
Each individual's child has their own point. It varies. It really does.
So I hesitate calling something an academy that may only be transitory to some students.
Point of information? It was the principal's suggestion that we change it to academy or staff?
Along with staff.
Based on the focus?
Based on the focus? Then I would think they've, no, they're doing.
I think that you could also use call to audience as the place for public input if so, because it is for two months.
So, here's my question. We, this, according to policy, and maybe I'm reading it, we cannot take action for 60 days unless we suspend, but we also want to make sure that we're getting feedback from our community. So, I would hesitate, that's why I'm kind of hesitant to put it on the agenda for next week because I don't want us to take action before we've heard from the community unless we're thinking of something different. So, if you could provide some clarity for me for that.
I was thinking, put it on the agenda to go forward through the 60-day period. Does that make sense?
So, put out information for next week.
No.
Well, no.
Because there would be, she, she wants to do a vote. So, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
The board says we want to take the recommendation of the staff and go through the process. Does that make sense? Am I explaining myself? I don't want to, I don't, I don't, I mean, it'd be nice to up the clock, but I wasn't trying to change the clock on the 60 days. If, if there's a requirement that it has to be geographical, that was what I would say, waive that requirement. And I can't read this right to tell them. Again, I don't understand it either. But the 60 days, I wasn't trying to change.
Okay.
Publish it. I'm saying, go forward, publish it, and then take information for 60 days and then put it on the agenda 60 days out again to then have a vote on it. But to have a vote to get the ball rolling was what my motion is.
I don't, I guess my question is, is that necessary? Or can we just allow for that to happen, Ms. Do you?
How does the public find out about it if we don't?
Yeah. As, as part of the discussion, what I'm hearing is my colleague to say potentially adding under new business and open to the public discussion, even though we're having one now, of the, starting the process of potentially renaming J.C. Rowe Center to J.C. Rowe Academy and start that 60-day clock publicly on Tuesday. However, having, within that 60-day window, allowing intentional time for public input and from feedback from other, from the superintendent just said, maybe have a specific call to audience times, having that opportunity session or specially called meeting to do, to do just that within that 60-day window. So, not, if we did, if we added this to agenda, not to officially rename it, but to start that process of it. That's what I, that's what I'm gathering from, I could be mistaken, but that's what I'm gathering from.
We took a lot of flack over how, because there wasn't any advance notice. So, I'm trying to head that off at the pass.
Um, Mr., uh, Dr. Merrick and then Mr. Wildebor.
I appreciate my colleague. I love any time that we give the public a chance to weigh in. I also don't know if it's a, I, I don't know that we would anticipate that this would be a big deal or not. And if it's not, why do we want to set up a whole meeting to try to like tell the public, you should have a problem? Because I don't think it is. You know what I mean? So, I, I do like the idea that call to, I mean, how's this? If we do start to get a lot of letters, we have 60 days in order to put together a meeting, you know, to, to listen to the public if there is a, a lot of outcry. And we'll know pretty quick.
Uh, Mr. Wildebor?
Just to clarify, at least my reading of this, it says, you know, such a proposal placed on the board's meeting agenda no sooner than 60 days from the date it was published as an information item on the board and meetings agenda, which is, I think, what we're doing next week. So, we're going to publish it to begin with 60 days later. And then, to my colleague way over there, I think, it does say way above, well, up here in A, where as you can see it now, that any naming or renaming, so we would have to waive that part because it does say clearly, you know, that it has to be named. Only, we'd have, we would have to rename the whole building, something in that area or a mascot. So, that would be something we would have to waive, I guess. So, anyway.
So, the motion, the, the motion is to add this to information or?
Published information.
Because according to this, it says information.
It says information item. Published as an information item.
So, if it's information, do we need a vote to go forward or no?
Well, we need to vote to put it on the agenda.
Yes.
But as far as to go forward, no.
Okay. All right. That's all I want to do is I want to get it on the agenda.
Ms. Justice?
Here's a little technical question for our attorney possibly. The fact that we have it on our agenda review, which is an agenda, the agenda review, can we consider this the start of the 60 days? Because it is on the agenda of a sense.
Yes. I can't see why not. It provides the notice. That's the idea behind it.
Speed it up. Got an extra week.
Three fast steps.
Yeah. Instead, we'll have to go through all that next week.
You think about it, I don't know how much merch they order or, you know, what they do, but you know, you're going to have to change all the logos and the mastheads and all that stuff. So, the sooner they get to it, the better.
It's going to be a continual process. We're not changing the sign and things like that.
Yeah. There's a lot, a lot more to it.
Point of order, our agenda does not actually say what we would be renaming it to.
True.
True.
Okay.
Okay. All the complications, all of them.
Oh, did I not say Chris Barnes School of Excellence? Did I not mention that part? Just changing the word center to academy, but I'll, I'll get that into next week's thing.
That's fine. Well, we got to vote it in. So, there's a motion to add this under information for the regular meeting. And just to kind of make sure we have the time.
Start the clock.
Well, no, to, to make sure we have the time allocated for that meeting. How much time do we think we will need for that? Just.
Ten minutes.
I'm going to say five minutes.
Five minutes.
Agreed.
So, um, so, stop that back there. All right. All those in favor of adding this to next week's agenda under information signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. So, that adds five minutes to next week's agenda. Are we good on J.C. Rowe? I hope so. So, the next thing is the board meeting schedule. Now, we started to talk about it, but we had some board members that were unavailable. And so, we wanted to make sure that their feedback was heard as well. So, we, I believe, only got to, through the first three meetings. And then, we stopped at the Tuesday, October 28th meeting. So, for, uh, that's the agenda review. The regular meeting after that, we need to determine, and it would be the November meeting. And so, we need to determine whether we want to do it on Tuesday, the 4th, which is Election Day, municipal elections. And then, or Tuesday, the 11th, which is Veterans Day. Nope. I'm sorry. Options are the 3rd or the 5th. Delete all of what I just said before. Options are the 3rd or the 5th. Gracious. It's not even been that long. Dr. Merrick, did you have something you wanted to say?
Oh, I, I was just picking up what we talked about at the last meeting, which was, you know, obviously, we don't want to have it on the 4th. I'm not even sure we could. There are some of us that are more involved in the election process than others. I know that I will be busy and I would really not want to do it on November 3rd when there's a whole lot going on. I would much rather do it on the 5th. I mean, that's just for me.
Okay. And others suggest, so you're requesting the 5th?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Justice?
I'm going to agree because I think, yeah, just, it's not just him, there's other people probably in this room that will be involved in some form or another possibly with the elections. So.
Okay. That seems to be.
We have enough on here.
All right. So, next we have, that was easy. Thank y'all. Next is the, the following agenda review meeting. So, it falls on the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. So, we can, we can keep it on the 25th. We can move it to the 24th or we can move it to the 18th.
Eighteenth.
I, I just want to kind of double check with Mr. Wildebor because I know that policy is what, is policy the third week of the month? Yes?
The 11th.
The 11th. Okay. So, we're, it would have to be the 18th then, if that was, because I would rather, I know people travel for Thanksgiving and I'm sure staff are going to want to travel. I would say, keep it away from the week of Thanksgiving.
My suggestion would be the 18th, Madam Chair.
So, policy's when then?
Policy's the week prior.
The 11th.
It can't be 11th.
Oh, no, it can't be.
It's, oh. I thought you were saying.
Gotcha. Oh, I misunderstood then.
That puts us to the 3rd.
So, nutcracker. So.
You have policy on the Wednesday?
All right. Ms. Justice?
Uh, yeah. I, I don't see any, what's, what would be the problem with doing it on the 24th? Is there any discussion about that? That seems close.
People travel.
Pardon?
Some people travel.
But that's before Thanksgiving. I mean, we don't have that many people taking off the whole week, do we? I, I don't know.
When it, when it gets to that?
What's the school calendar?
Thursday and Friday.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, Monday would.
I think Wednesday's the teacher work day.
Yeah. But Monday, to me.
I would lean toward, if we're going to do it, I would lean toward Monday.
I can do Monday.
Keep it as close as possible.
Review.
That's the, yes, the agenda review. And that would be the 24th. Okay? Next, um, so, the 3rd and 4th Tuesdays of December fall during the Christmas winter break.
December 2nd?
So.
Starts on the 19th of December?
We have the regular, um, the regular meeting. And so, I, I don't think there's other options that we have for this, but this is just kind of a heads up that the agenda review is going to be on the 16th, whereas the next meeting is going to be on the 6th.
Wow.
Did I read that?
Agenda review would be December 16th?
Yes.
What's that, do you just call it the Tuesday? But what was the second date you gave for?
The second one is the January regular meeting will be on the 6th.
5th of?
6th.
6th of January?
January. And there's no other conflicts for January and February and cutting into March. But at the end, the agenda review, at the end of March, kind of needs to be determined because of Easter and spring break. So, options for the agenda review held in March for the April meeting are March 24th, which is a Tuesday, and that's before Easter and spring break.
And it doesn't conflict with policy.
Tuesday, the 31st, which is the week of Easter. I think those are, those are the options.
I vote for the 24th.
Yeah. 24th makes.
All right.
And while you guys have your calendars out, we are looking seriously at August 27th for the next finance, capital and bond. County's bought in and our business people have bought in. So, I just got to get Jenny to send that out.
All right. And then, 27th.
Do we say, did we confirm March 24th is going to be?
Is that, is the 24th a reasonable adjustment for every one? Okay.
Does agenda review?
Agenda review on March 24th. Ms. Justice?
Yeah. I'm not sure what Ms. Bratford was just going over.
That's a separate, that's a separate thing. It's not related to this. Yeah. It's a separate entity. So, and then, the last one that we need to kind of determine is the regular meeting, and that's the regular April meeting. So, because of Easter holiday and spring break, we have options of Wednesday, April 1st, April Fool's Day.
When does spring break start?
Tuesday, April, that is listed, the 6th through the, it's, this says 6th through the 10th.
Of April.
It's teacher work day. Okay.
So, we have Wednesday, April 1st as an option, Tuesday, April 7th, which is the week of spring break, Tuesday, April 14th, which is the second Tuesday of April, which isn't going to interfere with Mr. Wildebor. Yes? Perfect. If you're still sure of policy at that point, who knows? So, those are, those are the options. The 1st, the 7th, or the 14th.
I would say the 1st because we follow last year's script. We have to have the budget ready in April. So, the sooner we get the board meeting done, you know, it's, because we, we may be, you know, it seems like it was around April 15th that we presented the budget, wasn't it? Yeah. So, I'd say go for the earlier date there.
Any thoughts from any other board members? Dr. Merrick?
How about on Tuesday, the March whatever, I mean, still our April meeting, but do it the last day of March?
The 31st.
The BOE for the 31st.
Um, how much, hold on.
Tuesdays are better than Wednesday for me. So.
Yeah, exactly. It holds to our schedule.
Hang on, guys. I just want to kind of check with Ms. Bowie. How, is that, does that align with like as far as policy and all of that? Like, would that be a viable option or no? For the April meeting to be in March, the end of March?
It's still a week apart.
Yeah. It's a week apart.
So, it, so, Mr. Blanchard, do you, any, any thoughts as far as if we could have the April meeting on March 31st? That kind of seems.
It's one day early.
Yeah. I don't know as I be.
I have a problem with, I mean, you have to have it on, on March, and you can do that 30 days.
It's more about the reason. You have to be covered input, um, if you're possibly all that's been back down in March.
Okay.
I mean, I, I haven't read that statute in a while, but, um, and it also does some hours.
Only one day apart.
You have to have that meeting, um, within the...
So, if we have the agenda review, as we've said, on the 24th, the 1st would align with that timeframe?
I would think so, because it's a...
Okay.
Do you require first things statute to have, point being that a lot of meetings are sort of special or...
Right.
So, your agenda review, and what special meetings within April wouldn't necessarily qualify as requiring regular review per month?
Gotcha. Okay. Um, I'm gonna lean toward the 1st. That's what I'm gonna lean toward, just to be on the safe side, um, to make sure that we're, it's an April meeting in April. Those are just my thoughts. Are we, are we, Mr. Perry?
You could do the, the only concern seems to be whether we would have, if we had another 31st, so that we fulfill our obligation for color audience for April. I mean, certainly, we, we're gonna have another meeting in April, which will be our agenda review for the main meeting. So, just open it up, then have a color audience, and then we're done with it.
You're talking about statute?
I, I'm hesitant to adjust the way this meeting is run. This meeting was established for a specific purpose, and that was...
It's only 24 hours difference, and we were talking about a Tuesday or Wednesday, unless somebody's got a conflict with that day.
Like I'm saying, I'm, I'm leaning toward the 1st, so that's my, my thought process just to be on the, on the same, uh, you know...
It's all five o'clock the same time, right?
Yeah, it's the same time, it's just... Okay.
That'll work.
So, all right.
Thank you. Thank you.
John Crystal. Ms. Bowie's awesome. All right, so... Consensus? Consensus seems to be April 1st for that one?
Yep.
All right. And that, I think, um, I'm just going to, um, make a motion to approve all of the changes that we have made and allow Ms. Bowie to be able to post all of our meetings. Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Chair, point of clarification?
Yes, Ms. Bradford.
I've had a number of people complain to me that they can't find our calendar, and they can't find out when meetings are. And I say, "Go to website." And I actually showed somebody, you know, and they're like, "Well, you can go into your assembly and find these things, but we can't." So, what do I say to those people?
This.
Yeah, and that's what I've done.
Meetings...
But if you look at that...
And that's what, I mean, that's...
It's pretty simple.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Is that, Dr. Barnes, are you in assembly as yourself? Or is that what the public can get?
I'm right now on the public side.
Public can get that. Okay. All right.
It, it gives the dates, it just doesn't give the information.
Yeah.
No, they were just wanting to fill out their calendar.
Because we don't have the information as of yet.
I have had a number of complaints, and I'm, I'm just like, "I don't understand what you're complaining about." I, I think you're wrong, but you confirmed to me that they just need to go to the website and look at the calendar.
Madam Chair, Ms. Baggy has something she wants to say.
We also have it on our calendar, on the account left right, so if you go to the website and you click on the calendar panel, all events for the entire board, policy, et cetera, are listed on our calendar.
Okay.
'Cause the announced meetings, only so many of them show up in advance.
Yes.
Correct. They're tied.
Yeah.
But if you get more events, they're all there.
Cool, thank you.
All righty.
May I make a comment to that?
Sure thing, Dr. Merrick.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I keep getting complaints that while we sit here in agenda review, we are talking about things that are going to happen in our regular board meeting, and we all sit around here and look at our assembly and look at the events that are on, that are gonna come up at our regular board meeting, 'cause we can see it. But those who are trying to follow along with us online, watching YouTube or whatever, they don't know what we're talking about because they can't see it. So, I really believe that when we pub, when we come to this of agenda review meeting, we have to have, you know, our agenda up on assembly that the public can see, 'cause they can't follow along with us.
I think that, um, and, and then I'll have Ms. Barnhart go. I think that the reason that it is not is because it hasn't been approved yet, and we don't want to post an agenda that has not been approved yet. We, there are things I know that through the course of our meetings, our agenda review meetings, that we have removed from there.
Sure.
Um, that we have added to, and so I, I don't want to have us publish a document that is not complete. Um, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I don't want to, there's a, there's a reason that it's not published yet, because we haven't approved it yet.
We could say draft. I mean, right? It's, it's, and honestly, according to open records law, if it's, if it's even a draft, it's public. That's the law.
Ms. Barnhart, and then Ms. Bradford.
So, I was gonna make the same thing you said, Madam Chair, with this, but, I mean, this, this was part of the frustration coming on to the board, is some people had more access to information than others. So, as a board, for us to get access to the information with the understanding that sometimes there has been adjustments made. We just heard from staff today that we needed to add something that wasn't ready yet, and there has been, in the past, there has been frustration from board members, um, because we would check once, and then a couple of days later, there'd be a new document, and then a couple of days later, there would be an updated document, because by the time of the board meeting being published, when the public has access to it, we want to make sure that we are disseminating accurate information. And so, there has been feedback, and that has been something that staff has worked on to ensure that when things are being uploaded, we're getting the most accurate up-to-date as we are looking over and asking questions. So, I think that's, that's where the concern for me is. I hear what you're saying to say, um, even publishing this in draft, but if we're even pseudo-disseminating partially true information, that sometimes is more of a concern for the public than, than once we have it finalized, 'cause we wanna make sure that we are sharing the most accurate up-to-date. I mean, I know there's been things I've personally asked about, and like, "Hey, what about that? Oh, yeah, you're right, this is, we gotta change this and update this." So, there are times that, as we're working through whatever it is, that we say, "This doesn't look to be the most up-to-date, um, from based on what we know." So, I'm, I'm hesitant with making this document open prior to us publishing it, because we have to ask questions, and sometimes our questions leads to saying, "Hey, maybe next month is the more suitable." So, that's where my hesitation is, but I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it bringing to attention. I just, I feel like it's, um, better for us to be able to come together and fully ask those questions prior to sharing it to public.
And just before, I, 'cause I think you had your hand raised. Looking at policy 2335, advanced delivery of meeting materials, right at the bottom, it says, "The proposed agenda and supporting materials will be made available for public inspection 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting." So, it is made available, it's just not made available as soon as, but it is made available. Ms. Bradford?
So, I have a question. When we're in this agenda review committee meeting, and you're showing stuff on the screen, as the people are listening by YouTube, as Dr. Merrick said, can they see that screen?
Sometimes, our guys will act, uh, will just go to the screen and you're...
That's, that's what I thought. And again, to echo part of what Ms. Barnhart said, um, you know, we did a whole lot of housekeeping, Ms. Justice, during that period we were making changes. And one thing that we did was, hey, in policy, would you please number them consecutively? So, if you drop the whole big policy stack, you can actually put it back together, and the staff is now doing that. But there were a lot of little housekeeping things, and one of them, Ms. Barnhart and I, we're talking about something this week, we gotta check that agenda again because it may have changed. And it would be nice if staff, when something, when a document changed, like, you're asking on policy 2610 to have a new version, so when it's saved as a PDF, could it be saved with the date it was, was recreated or amended, or at least have it at the top of the page, so that when we look, we know we're looking at a new document, or we're looking at the same one we saw last month? It's just a housekeeping item, but it would make my life a lot happier, um, and make things flow faster. And, and if we looked and we said, you know, "Oh, look, there's a new document, it's got a date on it from today," then we know to open that document, because I might have looked at my stuff last week, and that document wasn't there, or it may have changed. And that happens a lot, and I'm not complaining, 'cause it's a good thing that it happens.
You didn't work the call, huh?
Mr. Wildebore.
Oh, good. So, I'm wondering if we could solve this whole problem, maybe, is it possible to do like a split screen?
Split screen.
Where you see us and all this stuff, and then, with the, the actual agenda still up there the whole time, so that the agenda would be there, and all the pieces are there? Yeah, is that possible? I bet you could do it. I bet you can.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my gracious. Mr. Perry?
I'm sort of in agreement with Dr. Merrick on this one. I think we should be, we get this, it's yellow.
In all the documents.
And it's proposed, which is different from what our actual agenda is for today. I mean, you know, even if we don't wanna list it as in assembly as, as what the agenda is, couldn't we at least have it as a supporting document in, for the agenda review, like, this is the proposed agenda? Not update the, the, the regular board meeting agenda and make it, make it a thing, but just as a, as a document, this is the proposed one, so people can see it. Could we do that?
We don't get this till we get here.
No, but you can see it.
I think we're kind of going off track on this whole, like, this is not part of the, the discussion for today, um, so I kind of wanna redirect us, um, because we do have, we do have some other things that we need to address. Dr. Barnes, you had your hand up real quick.
Just one, one caveat. Sometimes, information we learn today, we change what's in there for next Tuesday. My only concern would be the turnaround time for, for our staff to get that information corrected up there. And two, sometimes we talk a lot about miscommunication, and if something changes, someone gets the information today, it changes for next week, and then they're like, "Oh, well, I thought it was blank, and it was blank instead." You know, I think, I, I don't want that to cause greater confusion in the process either.
I just wanna go back to three of us meeting.
All right. I'm gonna continue on with our, with our agenda, um, and that's something, if, if you'd like, Dr. Merrick or Mr. Perry, you can throw on the agenda for, for next month and fill out that form. The next thing we have is the employee bonus ad hoc committee, and, uh, Mr. Perry, you brought that forward, so...
Yes, so we approved this committee, um, back at our April regular board meeting. As of yet, we have, uh, we haven't received any committee assignments, uh, to that. It's almost four months. So, I was hoping that we, we would, uh, that would be done. I think there is some concern by Dr. Barnes over, you know, the finances, and, um, I would really like for us to, you know, follow through, get the, this assigned, what, what, the, the plan that, assuming that I am, I am named the chair, and, and I think Dr. Merrick and, and Mr. Wildebore have agreed to serve as well, if we could be appointed today, um, is, our initial thought was to have just a organizational meeting, one with Dr. Barnes, uh, you know, and Ms. Sutton, uh, the usual staff here, and, um, Ms. Keller. And then, so we could organize to see, like, who, who would we want on this? I, I had a very good suggestion from Mr. Wildebore over the phone, uh, I think it was yesterday, who said, "You know, we should maybe invite our, a couple of our Republican commissioners that is on to this thing, to get, get their buy-in, let them get invested in this thing." So, there's a lot of ideas as far as, you know, also with the, which kind of staff we would like to have on the committee. I'd like to at least be able to, you know, move forward with this committee. It's gonna take a long time for us to actually get through, uh, developing a plan, so that we can actually go and try to sell it and get the funding for it. I can't promise you that, um, we're gonna get the funding. I, I absolutely can't promise them or the public that we're gonna get the funding, but if we don't try, we're definitely not gonna get the funding. So, I'd like to get this thing moving, um, so, I, I have, we have some people that are, that, uh, who volunteered to, to start working on this. Hopefully, we could get it going, have our organizational meeting in August, and then, you know, uh, and then we can decide from there, when's the best time to have the full-blown start of this committee with everybody in it, you know, as a group. So, I, I guess I just hope, and I could, um, get your support on that. I think I wanted the, um, the, so that we can get this name finally, and so we can get going. So, I guess I'm making a motion that, that the board approve me as chair, and also approve Mr. Wildebore, Mr. Dr. Merrick, uh, to serve on the committee as well, and so that we can begin.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second? All right, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Wildebore, you had your hand up.
I'd like to just clarify, I, I did say we need to have counter picture buy-in both sides of the aisle, I think that would be important.
Thank you.
I saw you two faces, just, you know, I, I, 'cause, you know, on our finance committee, we have two folks from the Democratic Party, I think we need to have folks from both sides, that's all I said.
Dr. Merrick?
You kind of said it for me, and I just, I, I wanna remind my colleague that we may have a run on a specific ticket, but now that we're sitting here and, and on the board, we represent everybody. We don't represent one party or another.
All right. Is there any other commentary? Ms. Justice?
So, there wasn't a second?
There was no second.
You're not gonna second till we form a committee?
Well, you were asking about membership. That was what the discussion was about.
He named the membership as himself as chair, uh, Mr. Wildebore and Dr. Merrick.
Go ahead.
I, I would like to hear first from, from Dr. Barnes. I just kinda heard through the grapevine that there were some concerns about beginning this now, and I understand those concerns. In fact, if I've heard them correctly, uh, I, I agree. But I, I think, you know, here we are in a public meeting, and I don't think it's right that we're sitting here not talking, you know, there's an elephant in the room, let's talk about it. Did I hear that correctly, Dr. Barnes, that you had concerns about starting this, this committee at this time?
I'm gonna be clear that board business is board business, superintendent business is superintendent business, never the two shall meet. But I would say that obviously we have gotten what I consider promising news about the federal funding, uh, but as they said back in the old days, trust but verify, I am waiting to make an official announcement until we have the award letter, did I say that right? Notification of award letter in my hand, right? But it's a step in the right direction. I have a request and a proposal for you guys about another funding possibility next week. My only concern that I have is currently we do not have a state budget. Right now, we are balanced on the head of a pin. We have not made cuts to our staff, and I plan on not making cuts, because it goes back to our subsistence level that I've talked about before. However, a raise that we have not calculated or planned for could upend our, our, our proposal. I mean, we had $5 million in, in potential cuts from the time we gave the budget out in April till today. I, I, um, fools go where angels fear to tread, whatever you wanna say. I would caution to at least make sure we have a state budget, and we've balanced ourselves, and we're moving forward before we make any sort of inroads in something else.
Ms. Bradford?
And I would pick up where you went off. I have literally been in trauma over our financial picture, and to say, great, the camera's running, we've been in a financial crisis because of what has been done at the local and the federal and the state level all combined. And so, when I got the news this week that the federal government was gonna actually fund some of the title money, or maybe all of the title money, we still don't know until he gets it in his hand, I literally wrote down and wept, because we were, we were at a point of, he said it well, balancing on the head of the pin. So, to, to take up, this is called a, um, employee bonus, bonus ad hoc committee, to take it up, this is gonna sound harsh, and I don't mean it, because I want the employees to get as much money as they possibly can, but we're tone deaf to the, the financial situation of the district right now, to add anything new that would be looking at a single dollar coming from anywhere, until we solve the dollar request we have out there. So, so I'm gonna vote, well, we're not voting, 'cause it didn't have a second, but, um, I, I, I can't be, I can't be for adding anything that would take a dollar. The pie is only so big, and we need every dollar in that pie, and we still might not make it. So, I can't, I can't in good conscience do that.
Ms. Justice?
When we first decided that this was something we wanted to investigate and put together, we didn't have all of these cuts. All of them, all of them, and even now, we're talking about possibly, hopefully, getting back a big chunk of money from one of the cuts. But, so, so the circumstances have changed, and because of that, maybe it would be a good idea to maybe wait until the next budget cycle to investigate something like this? I mean, this is just my take on it, because right now, this is gonna be scary for the next gosh knows how many months. It's gonna be...
Is that a motion?
Okay, that's a motion to postpone the, the committee looking at employee bonuses until the next school year.
So, what timeframe, like what?
Uh, 20, okay, we're talking about 25, 26, 27 school year.
Second half. Dr. Merrick, and then Mr. Perry?
We seem to have every year budget issues, and I do not see this changing dramatically in the future. However, having said that, my colleague's idea is not, is not, uh, is not a bad idea. We do want to be able to reward our, our educators, and I know that we talked, when we first talked about creating this committee, that we might think about trying to find finances in the public sector. And because this committee doesn't have any actual power, it has to bring everything back to the board anyway, I see no harm in having a committee, if they can come up with some great ideas, do some networking with different corporations out there, you know, Enzino, Live Oak Bank, whatever, you know, I don't think that's a bad thing. And I do appreciate, uh, what my colleague is trying to do, so I would amend, uh, I'd like to amend the motion on the floor to say that we begin that committee as soon as this budget has been clarified.
From all the levels?
Sorry?
From all, from state and federal levels, what you're saying? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, when this was first proposed, uh, and we were voted upon, it was never for this school year. It was always gonna be at the very earliest, the 26, 27 school year. It's just a matter of, uh, we, if we were even gonna ask for money, we'd have to have a solid plan in place. So, it's to begin work on that, and that's gonna take some effort to, to, to learn how we can fairly evaluate all of our employees with diff, with different kinds of jobs, and make sure there's employee buy-in, and in addition, you know, you know, sell it to, as, as, as something that's gonna help us, you know, recruit, develop, and retain the best employees possible, and, but if we never get there, if we never start, we'll never get there, I don't see what the harm is. We're not promising anybody that, that we can guarantee the money. Obviously, we can't. I mean, even if everybody on this board wanted to do it, it was 100% sold, we can't promise what they're gonna do, even if we convince Dan Skles and all the rest of those people that this was worth doing, you know, they don't know what the budget's gonna look like next year. They can't promise us anything. But I'll tell you right now, if we don't, we'll never get it if we don't at least start working on it. And I do wanna say one more thing as far as this thing. A lot of the job of this committee is gonna be, how do we evaluate fairly? How do we evaluate our employees fairly and rate them? Part of it's the money, but I, I think that it, this, the work of this committee is gonna be beneficial in improving our general evaluation of our employees, 'cause we can do, we're do, we're going to get their input, we're going to be able to maybe evaluate our employees better regardless of whether we ever get the money for the bonus or not. So I think that there's valuable work that could be done with this committee. Obviously, this is just an advisory committee and so, you know, if we get our plan done and you enjoy, and you like it, but you, and we get it done by next June and we have something ready for you and you say, well, maybe let's propose this for the, you can always say, we like the plan, but we want to delay asking for the money until the 27, 28 year or whatever. That's fine, but let's get started and get the work done because otherwise, we don't even have anything to talk about.
Ms. Bradford?
I need to confirm, but I'm pretty sure I heard the county say, not this last meeting, one before, that sales tax revenue is off and they expect that to carry for two more years. And I really pondered about that and asked how much people, Dr. Merrick and I talked about this yesterday, I believe it's because all of us are ordering online and the sales tax doesn't come in to the county if we're ordering online. So there, the county is already working at staff reductions, they're cutting people right now and they're cutting resources and they're cutting committees because they don't want all the people that are in this room that are staff, that could be back in their office working towards educating our children, sitting here in this meeting. So, you know, we need to keep every employee that we have now, should be our number one focus, hang on to every employee we have now. And so I just think the timing is off. When we did this, things were completely different than they are now and there's only so many dollars of resources, there's only so much staff time. One of the things that county manager talked about is, yeah, this is a committee and it doesn't cost us anything, but the staff that have to be there every time the committee meets and get the agendas ready and do all the work, that's their time away from educating and you're cutting their staff back. So that was his logic for cutting three committees that have been longstanding. So again, I think that, I think the timing is just off and so I would support Ms. Justice's original motion, but I won't support it.
Ms. Bradford?
I do want to point out a couple of things that if you look at the retention rate and turnover rate on the state level, New Hanover County is doing better than that. So we have less people than the state average of retention. So we're able to hold more, am I saying that backwards? I'm saying, I'm saying it backwards. We're able to hold more of our people than what the state is seeing in turnover and staff and I think that is a testament to lots of different things. But looking at our budget, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's roughly $20 million from our local level is going to local supplements. That's a substantial amount of money. That's awesome. We love that partnership that we have with our county and our county commissioners for doing that because that puts us, if I remember correctly, number four, because a couple of counties squeaked in right above us because they didn't, they want to be.
You saved to say top five.
Okay, top five, top five for how we pay our staff. So I like this idea and concept, but I think the time that we're going to put into it, knowing that we already have a substantially larger, $20 million is a lot amount of money. So if we're talking about wanting to make sure that we're seeing more increases, I'm concerned with, I mean, you know, we asked for a lot more than what the budget ended up landing for this year. And so my concern is the time and effort to put into it, I think is a really good idea, but the reality and the likelihood of potentially asking for additional $20 million, I just don't see that happening. I know that we've been able to get the advanced teacher roles from the state and that's initiatives that allows our teachers to make more money and to continue in the field of education while also mentoring kind of the role of other staff members. And I see that potentially being able to expand and provide more of those opportunities as well as effective teaching practices in the classroom. So I like this idea, but I do not see the feasibility of it happening. Sorry.
Ms. Justice?
I want to say this to our staff. They're evaluated constantly every year. This concerns me. If you do want to do this type of project, we need to use what we already have. We don't need to put them through any more evaluation processes. Right now, even though we are in better shape than other districts, thank goodness, the whole state is in trauma in many ways. Education, we're losing education staff in droves across the state, across the nation. Last thing they need is to be put through another process that's going to distract them from what they need to be focusing on, which is what's going on in the classroom. So that's another reason to put this off and rethink it. Certainly don't need to be adding any more evaluation processes to an already overloaded evaluation processes to our, to our staff in the schools.
All right. So there is a motion on the table to delay this committee until the budget has been settled. That's the amendment. We just lost one, but she'll be back. Mr. Perry?
Just a point of clarification. So what is the definition of the budget settled?
As we know, and as I'm sure Ms. Sutton will tell us, it's never settled. But when we know what money we're getting from the state, what money we're getting from the feds, what money we're getting from the county, you know, in round, in round numbers, we need to know what that is. I was only responding to my colleagues who said, we're in the middle of figuring out our budget and this is not the time. So let's wait until the budget is more settled.
So I don't know if there's a definite, you're saying you don't, there's not like a definite, this date right here is when it'll start. It's when we get the information from state, federal.
I could amend that to say, let's, it's, today is, Will, let me ask the question. By September, do you think we're going to have a pretty good idea of what our budget looks like?
I think we will know about the federal by then. We obviously know where the county is. The state came back into session today. We have seen it as early as August, we've seen it as late as October. Is that accurate, Ms. Sutton?
I will amend my amendment to say, I clarify, I can't amend it, but I will clarify it, to say that we will bring this back up at our October meeting.
So I'm going to say.
If I, if I understand correctly, my colleague to the left said, suggested waiting until next year and I amended, I asked for an amendment to make it to October.
October. So as soon as the budget has been settled slash October. All right. So the amendment is to delay the start of this committee until the budget has been settled slash October. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll on that? Mr. Wildebore? Ms. Bradford? No. Ms. Mason? No. Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Mr. Perry?
You.
Ms. Justice?
No.
And Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
All right. That motion, that amendment fails. So going back to the original motion of delaying it until the 26, 27 school year. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll on that? Ms. Mason? Yes. Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebore? Dr. Merrick?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry? All right. That passes four to three. All right. Next up on the agenda is the presentation of the proposed New Hanover County Schools' Mental Health Improvement Plan for the 2025, 2026 school year. And that is. Ms. Farnum? We'll pause, right, and take about a break.
Darn, getting up and down.
One more.
I'm here.
Yeah, but and so is Ms. Bradford, but we only have three. Yeah, anyways. Um, I don't know how to get people back that have left the room. So we can continue on? Please and thank you.
Come on back.
I'm gonna go hook around my window though.
Oh yeah, well go around your window.
Although it's not in there, this side is not on the other side.
Maybe you just have a cool down car when you get out there, Ms. Justice.
All right, one, two, three, four. All right, board members, we are back. So if you could please come to the table and we will hear from Ms. Farnham.
You do, you have a handout.
Okay.
I'm gonna walk you through the information before you have to get to all of that. Some of the information in the handout was provided in your board update, but I'll get to that part. So overall, oh, and by the way, I have Lisa Brenner here with me, Director for Student Support, and she is a subject matter expert on the vast majority of this information. And she is here for any questions that we may have. Notice I said "we."
Okay, so in accordance with general statute and State Board of Education policy, we are required to adopt a school-based mental health policy or plan that includes mental health training program and suicide risk protocol. And this is based on, like I said, general statute and then state board policy, which is in regard to student health issues. So as of August 2025, plans must be approved by local boards of education every five years. In this requirement, the planned components are identified for us, a model training plan is identified for us, and then the reporting structure. So that outlines what you'll see on the next few slides. So our objectives for this time together is to understand how the school-based, the school mental health improvement plan aligns with state board policy. And again, it's identified as an improvement plan because this is a continuous improvement process. It is not that New Hanover County Schools has been determined to require improvement in this area. Every district's plan is an improvement plan. And we'll be focusing on the compliance areas and overall the promotion of student well-being. So we will highlight the collaborative approach to the mental health services, which includes our partnerships with our community organizations, all for the benefit of enhancing services to students. And then we'll discuss the district-wide staff mental health training plan and the suicide risk referral protocols that equip our students with responding to their needs. The state board policy, like I said, requires that we shall adopt and implement a plan for promoting student mental health and well-being and for assessing and improving upon the effectiveness of these supports. And these are with regard to mental and social emotional health as well as any substance use needs. The components are pretty extensive. As you can see, these are all required. Universal prevention, and then that's included in our core instruction, our curriculum, and our environments. Early intervention for mental and social emotional health and wellness. Of course, referral treatment and reentry. Reentry is really referring to those students that may need to leave the school district for some period of time for a part of their mental health supports or treatment plan and then coming back into the district. Memorandum of Understanding, I'll go into that more deeply with regard to our community partners and our local management entity. Next, the suicide risk referral protocol, our stakeholder engagement, liability, reporting to DPI, and of course, the timeline. So going a little bit deeper into the required components. Universal prevention, as you see here, we've got our bullying prevention programming. This is a component within our middle and high schools, our Safe Promise Clubs. Sold-out youth, there's a substance use prevention program. Of course, you've heard about our reframing behavior staff training. You've heard about Safe and Civil Schools, the CHAMPs training, our annual mental health plan, which we update annually, and then our anonymous reporting, which is through the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System. Our early intervention covers zones of regulation. Those are elementary and middle intervention supports for supplemental and intensive needs. Of course, you know all about our multi-tiered systems of support, which is our multidisciplinary problem-solving model to support our students who may have academic or some type of other social, emotional, mental health or behavior needs. And then Wellness Champions and Committees to support student and staff wellness. Our referral treatment and reentry, first and foremost, our, we have a major component around providing parents and caregivers with the resources that they need to connect students to needed services. And those resources and referrals will be mentioned a little further as I talk about the MOUs. We also have a strong focus on developing transition plans for students who are re-entering the district after acute or residential mental health treatment. And then maintaining our MOUs with service providers to address student mental health and substance use issues. And of course, you are knowledgeable of those MOUs as you are the approving body for those. The Memorandum of Understanding component, of course, you know, our MOUs with Health and Human Services. First and foremost, providing school-based mental health therapy in all of our elementary and middle schools. And then our MOU with Coastal Horizons for our WAT clinics and for Lake Forest Academy. Those are covering school-based mental health in those two areas along with other additional services. And then, not to mention our Trillium partnership where Trillium serves on our School Health Advisory Council. And with regard to Trillium, they are often the funder for some of our additional resources, specifically Sold-out Youth Substance Use Prevention Program, and then also additional supports for us with school-based mental health provided by Coastal Horizons. And as a reminder, I am appointed by a county commission to serve on the Trillium Regional Board for our region to assist in advocating for these resources. Now, our suicide risk referral protocol, I did provide this for you in your board packet over the last couple of weeks. To protect the integrity of the protocol, it's not necessarily something that we want to overly share just because we need to make sure that that protocol is beneficial when we are assessing our students. Our suicide risk referral protocol is aligned with an evidence base and best practices. It emphasizes school and parent caregiver partnerships. That is absolutely essential to this. And then our annual training for all of our support staff. Our stakeholder engagement, the primary method of our stakeholder engagement, as Ms. Justice knows, is through our School Health Advisory Council, where Ms. Justice participates, where we have our community partnerships, agency providers, and professional organizations, parent and caregivers on school and district committees, and then student panels specifically around our School Health Advisory Council. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, but if there is, feel free to jump in. I want to move to, next to our reporting, to DPI. We have our Healthy Act of Children's Policy Annual Report that is due September 15. We are feverishly gathering all of the necessary information for that. Our Specialized Instructional Support Personnel Annual Report was due on June 30. That was submitted in its entirety. And then our School Mental Health Improvement Plan Revision, which is right now, which is due every five years. So our timeline, beginning July 1st of 2021, we had to adopt a plan, begin implementation, and commence our mental health training plan. And that was provided to this board in June of 2021. And then, of course, the plan must be approved by the local governing board and renewed every five years, beginning August 1st of 2025. So we're ahead of that by a couple of days. So as you can see, our planned components mirror the state board policy around school-based mental health policy, training program, plan requirements. We have a model plan, a model program and risk referral program. We provide the six hours of content for initial training within the first six months of employment to our staff at no cost. And then, in addition, we have the K-12 staff completing a required two-hour child sexual abuse and sex trafficking training. We completed that in 2425, and our next round of that will be in 2627. And as mentioned earlier, that is our darkness-to-light component. So before we get to questions, I want to bring you to the handouts you have. As you can see on the first document in your packet, you can see the extensive list of SHAC members. Very robust team. As you move through, you can see in our plan, we have covered the content questions and the description and action items. I think we can go to the, Anita, can you go to the next document? Thank you. Oh, and I don't think this will work on that. Okay, yep, perfect. So our strengths, and I won't read through all of these, but if there are any questions, we've got, just in general, the strengths being school-based therapists available in every school. We do have solutions for any waitlist that would occur. Again, that was a solution provided by Trillium grant dollars. Our crisis response team, school-based wellness, Parent and Caregiver Academy that provides family engagement activities and additional skill building. Existing, as mentioned, our existing initiatives through instruction are the reframing behavior zones of regulation. And then moving on to that next page, the, again, extensive list of resources and initiatives. And then on, with our timeline, many of these are continuing. I'll move to the next one. How are we building and aligning our infrastructure specifically around our training program and compliance with state board policy? Continuing the suicide prevention awareness and district protocol. Making sure that all of our staff are trained and our school personnel who work directly with our students, our teachers and administrators know exactly who they can go to and who's trained to implement the protocols. Annual prevention and intervention referral training for our school-based student support staff. Again, those are our school counselors, school social workers. Parent and Caregiver Academy, parent workshops will be continuing. Bullying prevention, cyber safety, substance abuse prevention. The ongoing collaboration with district and community partners through School Health Advisory Council to support the whole child is essential to this process. Let's see, how do we collect our data? As I mentioned, the first of the DPI reports were due on June 30, and ours was already submitted to maintain appropriate data for specific areas that included school nurses, school social workers, school psychologist nurses, and school-based mental health. We have a strong collaboration with our curriculum instruction team to support all the instructional areas. And then in support of DPI's Portrait of a Graduate, which brings us back to the whole child. Physical activity, yep, you can move on to the next one. Our physical activity components are included here. There is an additional high school component for a recommended five-minute brain break per class. And then our evaluations, we, of course, use feedback from administrators and school-based student support staff, regular communication with our school-based mental health staff to discuss referrals, maintenance, and processes. And then, of course, continuing to administer our assessments around multi-tiered systems of support to make sure that everything that we think we're doing to benefit students is actually benefiting students. Early intervention, we utilize research-based warning signs to identify students who may be at risk of developing or experiencing mental health issues at school. And then that's when we know to use our interventions. School-based mental health services, of course, those are on referral basis. And school-based mental health is never provided to a student without expressed written consent of the parent or guardian. That is not something that we determine is needed. That is something that we make a referral for, and the parent guardian is able to determine if that is an appropriate measure for their child. And on the last one, again, highlighting our efforts for treatment referral and reentry. And as I mentioned, we utilize those, our parent and caregivers with additional resources, community-based services for their students and their families, making sure that our transition plans are appropriate based on the types of services the students have been receiving. Our MOUs are, again, essential to this process. And in this continuum of supports, we have Lake Forest Academy as a day treatment program, which is, again, such a, an amazing resource for our community. And then our, back to our student support staff, they are trained in behavior threat assessment and suicide risk referral protocol. In addition, our administrators are trained in behavior threat assessment. Now, the suicide risk protocol is specifically reserved for our student support staff to implement. So you have a lot of information. And then, the last thing in your packet is the training program that is attached to this plan. And you can see the minimum training content required. And then your chart has all of the requirements across the top. It's the chart that is very blue in our district colors. And, yep, there you go, Anita, thank you. That second page, it provides our topics, required topics, in the far-left column. Who participates in that for how, for the two hours? Who needs the six hours? And then existing staff, the refresher, minimum of two hours, and then new hires. And this goes through all of the details of the specific trainings that I did mention. There's a lot of information there. Lisa, what did I miss? They don't want more. All right, are there any questions before I ask you for your approval?
Mr. Wildabour, and then Dr. Merrick.
So Lisa, do you want to jump in on this? I'm looking down the list. Now.
So I have a few law, high school principals, so that was not an exclusion fact. I think at the time, these were the two principals that it greatly deserved. We are in the process of looking for the upcoming school year. So we can certainly reach out on that. As far as the counselors, we have not had a counselor from a school building actually serving on the committee, because the committee often meets during the school day. And so we've been really cautious about pulling them out. We have, over the last year, as part of trying to increase our student voice, the meeting has moved from school to school. We've had elementary, middle, and high school meetings. So our counselors have been critical in participating in the meeting at their school, identifying the students who have served on the panel to share with us their experience.
Hang on, Dr. Merrick, and then Ms. Bradford. You are, okay.
If the schools are out, even though they have students there during the time, they still stop in and speak to the groups. So there are counselors there during the day at the schools that we are visiting.
So Dr. Merrick, and then Ms. Bradford.
This is a lot of work. And I want to acknowledge, not only doing all this work, but also making sure it dovetails with the laws and everything else. I'm very much impressed. And, you know, here on a board level, we just want to make sure that the policies and the procedures are in place, and obviously, they are, congratulations. My concerns is that, well, the devil's always in the details and how well this gets implemented. And things become a lot more gray and less, you know, nice and clean. I, you know, I met with the Special Education PTA Child Advisory Group and listened to their concerns about bullying and how it affected their mental health. This weekend, I attended a United Methodist Church group that was a bunch of LGBTQ kids. And I listened to them talk about their concerns, not just in school, but in the community. But again, their perception of being bullied and harassed. And both of those groups had mentioned that teachers watch them being bullied and do not interfere and intervene. And I'm wondering how we take all of this and get it down to the granular level where, well, we're protecting kids who are being harmed.
So, first of all, bullying is a grave concern. It remains a grave concern. And our plan is to utilize every reasonable effort to prevent, to deter, to identify alternative social skills so that bullying is not the means of student interaction, peer-to-peer interaction. And there is always plenty of work to be done. But having specifics around those, we have our bullying investigation protocol that is essential for identifying those specific situations. And again, going back to some of our initiatives, the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System is a way that that can be, very specific details can be reported without, while providing anonymity, without identification, and then providing specific details so that can be investigated. And that investigation process goes through a very specific protocol in determining if that bullying meets that definition of, again, that persistent, and I'm not ready to announce the definition, but it needs to be persistent, and it does need to be, not necessarily ongoing, even one incident needs intervention, but it might not meet the definition of bullying. Either way, either way, antisocial peer communications that are harming to a student have to be intervened upon. So we need specifics so those can be investigated.
So you would.
Thank you, yes.
What they have shared with you, I will say that myself and our two supervisors of school counseling, elementary and secondary, met with the special ed PTA parents this past school year. We also met on several occasions with the students who shared their stories. We did take that back. As Ms. Farnham said at the very beginning, this is an improvement plan. So we took back all the feedback that we received from that. I want them to know that their voice mattered and that we have been continuously looking at, you know, the notes that we took during that time, are we addressing it? We've shared their voice with our counselors and our social workers too. So it does make a difference, and I appreciate you looking that up.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Bradford, you've been waiting a hot minute, so.
So a lot of it is who is actually willing to serve in an area of need as a content area expert. And then for board member, that's determined by board committee, of course. And then, like Lisa mentioned, if we've got administrators that know that this is something that they could tackle, they could be, you know, a support for, then they want to participate. I don't know if it, we will, we are, we're not afraid to ask people to serve, but we also are not afraid to accept requests for service.
Yeah, increasing the community representation has been a commitment of our team over the last two years. Over the last two years. So we have, we have reached out, oftentimes, people have reached out to us because they've heard about the work that everyone is doing. And I will say, it's been really exciting to watch the change over time because the community does show up and says, hey, this is things that we can offer. This is how we can support the work you're doing in schools. And this is how we can show up for the parent academy. But that has been a constant, intentional.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to highlight and grateful that you highlighted that anybody participating in this has parental consent because we value that relationship with our families. But mine, kind of along the same lines with the accountability, I know, looking at the different formats, and I think it's so wonderful how many opportunities that we give to have engagement because students are going to pick and choose how they want to engage with individuals. And so any, any sort of feedback we can get from them so we can be responsive is so important. But can you just speak to some of the fidelity with anonymous things and how we go and respond to that? Just so that we know that if you're submitting a concern, that it's not going unheard, essentially.
Right, and then Lisa would be able to speak a lot about the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System as well. I can, I can share that when there is a life safety alert, Lisa and I are both contacted immediately if it's, you know, right now in a few minutes, or if it's 7:00 PM tonight, or if it's 1:00 AM or 3:00 AM. And if somebody doesn't log into the system to provide immediate information, we start getting phone calls. It is, it's happened more than times we can count on our fingers this year that one of us has provided contact information for an immediate concern. Say Something Anonymous Reporting System is provided to us by the state. It is linked in with 911 dispatch so that there can be an immediate response to ensure safety. For those situations that are referred that are not considered life safety alerts, let's say that a student logs in and says, you know, that they can provide their name or not, not, but if they provide their name, they're not contacted outside of that necessarily unless it's by their school staff. But they may say, you know, I witnessed something happen in class today, or, you know, I have a friend that texted this to me, or I saw this on, you know, social media, and this is a concern for me. Those are linked to the school team, the school administrator, school counselor, school social worker, assistant principal, and we can see the communications with the Say Something counseling team or crisis support team. We can log in, Lisa and I can both log in to any of those reports that are presented to our school teams and see those communications. And then we also have those, we sort of triangulate our data by making sure that every bullying report that is made is then investigated through our protocol and then logged into our system. So that's why this report that we, we completed and submitted to DPI by June 30th is so important because it does identify the number of interventions that our school social workers have provided, the number, and I, and I provided some of that in an earlier board update, earlier in the year, the number of situations that are coming from, that they're assessing or investigating from an anonymous report, or whether it's anonymous or not, but that's just as an example. So those systems are, are available for us to look through.
Ms. Justice, then, Mr. Perry.
Okay, I can't emphasize this enough, and you guys are all very aware of it. The concerns that Dr. Merrick brought up, everything that you're saying now, we are so handicapped by our lack of staff. We need more bodies, we need more adults, and we need people that kids can talk to. And smaller groups of kids, our class sizes are way overloaded. And this is a matter of resources come from through the state, the county, who just cut us back, which is, in my opinion, and then we have the federal government too. So I want to say it's not from the staff not being, not wanting to, it's just, and not being able to, and that we don't provide resources, it's just in all practicality, they are totally overloaded in just about every situation these days. I'm just being real straightforward here, you know, it's, that's, that's the biggest challenge of all. And they themselves have their own mental health challenges because they're so frustrated for not being able to do what they want to do, which is educate these kids and wrap them around, support them. I wanted to say that on behalf of all of the out there in the classroom dealing with this every day.
Mr. Perry?
I have a couple of questions. First, it's obviously you put an extensive amount of work into this. How long you been working on this? Sometimes good things take a long time. And secondly, what is the, you said you got some additional funds, what is the cost of these programs for this, for the district?
So how long have we been working on this? Lisa and her team and I have been communicating on this every month, always, I think. Lisa and I have a standing weekly meeting, and this is one of the items that is generally there and especially the content on here. The, so it's a, it's a work in progress always. The, the bare bones of this plan, like I mentioned, was provided to the training plan and details of our mental health plan in accordance with general statute was created in 2021, and then we've just continued to add to that and revamp with additional data. The, the next question you had.
Money.
The money, thank you. So the, the vast majority of this is provided to us through partnerships, so we have to make sure that we're engaging with our partners to have all of the information. The parent training sessions are provided as a part of our relationships with Coastal Horizons, with Trillium, with the county Health and Human Services. So dollar, yeah, with DSS, our dollar exchange, we did not build contracts to accomplish these. We made sure we could do this through the partnership and leveraging the resources that our neighboring agencies have, and making sure that we are braiding our, our efforts to reach the families in need, reach the students in need. So a, a good part of this is making sure that we acknowledge where our gaps are, acknowledge where our lack of resources might be, and spend time in collaboration with our agencies around us, and especially Trillium as our local management entity that has the responsibility to provide us with resources, that those are the additional dollars that came through to make sure we didn't have a waitlist.
I'm not saying it costs the district money, I, I understand that you're working through other, through other funds and other providers and funds and such a, I'm just asking you for a dollar amount.
So I would just say the school-based mental health in and of itself in the past, and Ashley can maybe help me go back in my wayback machine, and the, the last time we paid for the school-based mental health services just from the county was, I feel like it was like 1.7 million, but we could, we could come back on a, on dollar amount. This is more than a million dollar effort. I would say this is, this is a several million dollar effort, but I can give you more specifics at another time.
Thank you, yeah, sometimes good things cost money.
And we are way over, so Ms. Bradford, if you could close us out.
Well, I just, in listening to you think, I have a question for Dr. Barnes. And the 42 positions that we're waiting to hear from the endowment on school specialists, would that impact this at all?
Sort of yes and no. I want to reflect back to what Ms. Justice said before. Every time that you have more adult eyes on children, children are safer. So I think that it's more about building in redundancies and early warning systems so that we can get kids the help that they need. You know, I'm built into the same Say Something app, so I get those responses when something comes up, and I'm always like, what's happening, you know? So I think that those 42 specialist positions put more eyes on kids and keep kids safer. Would you agree?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Lee.
So I just need approval on the plan.
Oh, yes, to approve the plan as.
Second. There we go. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, um, next on the agenda is breach of board policy and confidentiality. That was brought forward by Ms. Bradford, so I'm going to hand it over to her.
Okay, um, this is an unpleasant item, breach of board confidentiality and policy. And if someone wants to ask which policy, at a minimum, 2120. But this is about a discussion on accountability, about ethics, about not maintaining a double standard for board members versus the staff, as well as board member to board member. And the facts are, one board member's actions are seriously negatively reflecting on our school system and on our superintendent's goals for the district, and it's a pattern of behavior that's inappropriate. The facts are unrefutable. Actions and words from one board member are negatively impacting the superintendent's ability to operate the school district. So I am making a motion to hold a special meeting for the purpose of hearing this breach of board confidentiality and policy by board member Perry, and I would suggest that we do it on August 5th in front of our regular meeting so we don't have to call all the staff together, although, you know, I could, we, board member, board, board member, Wildebor had said, you know, you could do it on Monday, but I'm just always aware that when we ask the staff to come to there, they're like this, they're away from their desks and they're away from their work. So that's my motion.
And I will second that for purposes of discussion. Is there anyone who has commentary? Mr. Perry?
Question? If I understand your motion.
Is your mic on? Is your mic on? Because I can't hear you very well.
Yeah, my mic's on, sorry. Wasn't, I wasn't speaking loud enough. If I understand the motion, you, you want to have a hearing before our next, before this next board meeting?
I want to have a hearing. I suggest that it be before the next board meeting, just for the, the time element of it.
I understand.
Yes, a special meeting for the purpose of hearing about the breach of board confidentiality and policy.
Do you want to put a time on that, or do you want that to be a separate issue? Do you want to first just have a, a motion to have a hearing? Or do you want to say we're going to meet at 4:30, 5, uh, sorry, uh, 2, whatever?
I, I, what do you suggest?
Well, I think that that, if, if, if we might.
You want to separate it?
Can we separate that?
Sure. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, so then it would read, I'm going to hold a special meeting for the purpose of hearing, uh, breach of board confidentiality and policy by board member Perry.
All right, and I seconded that. So Mr. Perry had his hand, and then Ms. Justice.
You're asking to have a meeting, but you're not giving very specific charges, are you? You, you're talking in generalities. So how about being, lay some specific instances? You got asked for a hearing regards to charges towards me without mentioning specifically what it is, that, that, I think the public deserves to know what you, what you actually are accusing me of doing. So why don't you put it out there instead of dealing with generalities?
I'm going to let Ms. Justice speak, and then I will, if you would like to respond to a lot of that, so.
I'm not sure how we could modify it, but there's also, also another concern with outbursts that are inappropriate. We've been called on mic before, there was just an inappropriate outburst that occurred here. Uh, I think we should roll that into also your other concern. And as far as the specifics, this involves a child and parents, I don't think we're allowed to really go into that legally.
Talk about child and parent.
Yeah.
I ask you to remember the FERPA part of it, you know, there's, there's two parts to that, student record and personally identifiable.
It has to be in the third person.
Right. Just the parent, the, the.
Yes.
Hey, parent.
So I guess I want to modify the purpose of the hearing, is that what I should be doing now, adding it to the?
Ms. Justice, if you look at policy, uh, wrong one, 2120, it outlines the things that board members should do and not do, and I think your concern about posting social media and outburstering meetings, that's all covered under there, and I've, and I've got confidentiality and policy. It may not be the only one, but.
So just using the policy itself, we don't have to go.
It covers what you're asking, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you, because that needs to be concerned.
Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know in previous conversations with you, and I'm just having it in the open discussion with my fellow colleagues, it has been serving alongside of you in leadership role. When an issue arises, you attempt to address individual board members, and so I want to openly ask you, has there been an attempt to address and in turn curb behavior? Because I do not believe holding a special hearing is even, should be a consideration for this board if that has not been done under your leadership, madam.
Um, it has. There have been phone calls, emails, and individual conversations, as well as consequences that have been given. Perry?
First, I have a question for our attorney before I begin my comments. Can I, can I speak in general terms of, of, of the nature of the thing without, as long as I avoid personally identifiable information?
Yes, yeah, that, that's what I was trying to get at right there a minute ago, you know, when you talk about a parent or a, an appeal, as long as, you know, what you say is not going to be such that somebody can identify the parent or child we're talking about.
Thank you. There was a parent in the crux of what this is, especially when it comes to confidentiality accusations, there was a parent who had made a request of our board for, to appeal a student assignment decision. We, and this was recently, within the last few weeks. The, we were in a closed session, and we discussed the matter, and as a board, we decided to grant the appeal. And then we decided to schedule that appeal for eight days from the current date that we, of that closed session. Having known the, the parent and knew that he was extremely anxious about what was being decided, whether there would be an appeal and when it would be, because he was, this, this parent was hoping that it might even be the very next day, or he also needed to know whether or not, um, he would.
We're coming real close to.
Be careful.
Yeah, you're coming real close.
So there was very anxious moments, but work might, work time might have needed to be taken off to accommodate this. So how, knowing the person as an acquaintance, as soon as the specials, the closed session was over, I simply texted the parent what, that the appeal had been granted and it was at such a date and time. This was information that obviously I should not have given this parent, this should have been left up to Dr. Barnes, but this was information that this parent was nonetheless entitled to know if, you know, I, I am going to freely admit that I stepped out of line as far as stomping on, Dr. Barnes is, um, you know, lame, and I freely admit that. But to say that this is a confidentiality issue, it would, you'd have to say at the same time that, that Dr. Barnes was wrong for telling this parent the same thing that I told him. I mean, I think, and, and I'm not saying I didn't do anything wrong, and I promised that I won't do it again, but you, you're making a capital offense out of, I'm trying to help, help a parent I know who's feeling very anxious about something, I didn't think the least of it. It wasn't like I was disclosing other information. This is information they were going to eventually hear. So I, I admit that I'm wrong, I admit that I will do it again, I won't do it again, but I, I think this is just an honest mistake, uh, you know, perhaps being new, and perhaps this is the first time I've been involved with, recently was involved in student hearings, that I think any person who just wants to, as a board member, try to, try to be sensitive to where our parents are and how much nerve-wracking stress they're going through while we're waiting around for bureaucratic moves, so trying to relieve their stress. So I mean, I admit I made a mistake, I admit I do it and think, but I think this is overkill.
I'm going to just kind of step in because I think that there was a bit of an overstep on my fellow board member's part. Dr. Barnes's responsibility is, the district's responsibility is to have contact with the, with the families and the parents, so Dr. Barnes did not violate anything, and I, you... Dr. Barnes was in the right, it was his responsibility to do so, it was not our responsibility to do so. And the problem of the matter is, where do we draw the line on confidentiality? Because right now, it's being drawn by one board member in one way, where other board members feel very differently. When closed session is happening, it's closed session regardless, and that information is to be discussed with only the people that are in that room. And that's the concern, it's not the exact offense, it is the fact that it was closed session information and it was shared with someone who is outside of the room.
Uh, Dr. Merrick and Ms. Bradford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I do not believe that it's in the best interest of the board to, you know, overly punish our members. However, there has been multiple attempts by more than one of us to modify certain behavior. And I don't think we need to litigate this in this meeting today. The motion on the table is simply whether or not to have a hearing. And I have to say, I was against it when I first heard about it, but when you start to add up all the different, this is not just one thing that you're talking about, and we will litigate this later, but there have been multiple instances, and today, just now, has put me over the edge, and I know how I'll.
Ms. Bradford?
I agree with Dr. Merrick's comments. So I will just say this, the part that I'm really having a hard time with is the double standard. If Dr. Barnes's people at the table had done this, he would have dealt with them, that's his lane. If we don't deal with people that get out of their lane and step into the superintendent's lane that are on our board, then we're saying that there's a double standard. And if we, if you, I, I always lead from the top, and so I hold myself to that standard. So how can the, the teachers and the administrators and the schools know and have any faith in us, the board, if we don't do this? And the thing that's so egregious is this was done a mi- And the thing that's so egregious is, this was done immediately after the closed session or in the closed session, after we had just said, "Make sure you don't share this information with anyone." And then, before the meeting was even over, it was, it was shared with the parent. And when anything we do in an open meeting represents the entire board, when we do something outside this, the meeting, like we make a post on social media that's heinous, that's between you and you, you know? It looks bad on the board, but when you say something in a board meeting, or you break policy right smack in the middle of a board meeting, or you divulge closed session information to a parent that was supposed to be highly protected, that's really grievous. And I believe as a board, we should, we should deal with it. Yes, there are other things that, you know, that make a pattern here, but, and I'll just stop with that for the sake of time.
Okay. All right. There is a motion to hold a hearing over the breach of board policy and confidentiality. Ms. Bowie, will you call the rule?
Mr. Wildeboer.
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Meissen?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
And Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
That passes six to one. As far as timeframe goes, we do need to have enough time to notify the public of the meeting. If we were to have it on the fifth, is that enough time? Okay.
Is that our board meeting, the fifth?
Yes.
Oh, that is, so we don't...
We could do it like at four o'clock before the board meeting, but that could run us, but we had a fair length. I think we're what, three and a half hours right now?
We're at three and a half hours.
We have to start at five.
Yes, we have to start at five.
Oh, yeah.
So...
Is there a timeframe set out in policy for special hearings in terms of how timing goes?
Dr. Merrick?
I would like to request that we do not have this on the same day that we have a board meeting. It's, it's emotionally draining, not just, not just for one person, for all of us. This is, this is a bit traumatic. I don't like having to do it. I don't like the idea of it, but I don't want to have a board meeting right after it either.
How about Monday?
Mr. Perry?
I think, at the very least, we should wait until after our regular meeting, in case any, and get some reaction from our public and see what they think about all this.
So, we have the day before, we have after. Is there any timeframe that lets, if you could all open your calendars? And I am not available on the seventh, so that date is out for me.
Sorry, I'll just move it a little bit forward. If any, if you'll, you'll agree on that.
Is, okay. Is the fourth agreeable for?
What time?
In the afternoon.
In the afternoon? Is there a specific?
One P.M.
One P.M. on the fourth? Is that, do we need to make a motion for that? I don't think we do, because we've already, so, August fourth at one P.M. I, it says on here, the contract extension, but I think that was supposed to be under the consensus items after closed session. So, I am going to call for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11(c) for the following purposes: to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 115(c)-402 and not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes; to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the family educational rights; to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board; and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment with the school system; or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against any individual employee. Do I hear such a motion?
Stop it.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are inclosed.
I don't see you sitting down.
You know, you get better looking as the night goes on.
Thanks. I know, I got you.
Did you see his Tweety Bird picture?
Yes, I did.
Shirtless?
Yes.
I wasn't either.
All right.
My goals away from the night.
I don't care. We are back in open.
Madam Chair.
We need to do a personnel report first.
I'm moved that we accept the personnel report.
Second.
I'm sorry, there's some tomfoolery occurring.
That's exactly what it is.
She got the job.
Yes, we're doing two motions.
Okay, I'm moved we accept the personnel report.
And I will, okay. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Brecker.
I'm moved to extend the superintendent's contract from 2028 to June 30, 2029.
Second.
Oh.
There's lots of seconds. All right, any discussion? Hearing none.
Wait, I think it's a great idea.
I would say I wish I could give him another five years, so.
We'll talk about it.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. We have no committee reports.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
You beat them.
And don't forget next week's meeting on Thursday, Jesse and he, and anyone else who wants to come.
Finance, bond, and.
Capital.
Capital. All right. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
That passes five to one. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Well, I've never heard you buy Willie Adams' one time.